Showing up fine on my end. People might need to refresh their browsers if they have an old. You might be defaulting to an old site on their browser page, but everything's showing up fine on my end.
All right, great. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. This is the July 27th Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and because of COVID-19, the meeting's being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee must raise their hand by clicking on the Raise Hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in can dial *9 on their phone and a raised hand will appear on their behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmute you, you'll need to tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person left three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. I just got a message from Councilmember Lay that he's having trouble logging on. And just so, I think since there are some computer problems, I would propose that we take about a five-minute break to start off the meeting before we have a roll call, just to give people a chance to log in. You know that I don't traditionally do that, but I think there are some outstanding issues tonight that would warrant that. I see some thumbs up. And so we will take a five-minute break and then get started with the meeting. So we'll get started at 6:03, we'll get started at 6:08. Thank you all for your patience. We normally don't have these problems. I don't know if it's possible, City Clerk, if we could post just a share screen that says, well, let's get started at 6:08 to allow people a chance to log on. Thank you. I will post something, hold on here. And then Meredith, it looks like Councilmember Lay is over in the attendee side. If we could move him over to panelist?
I have tried and it won't let me at the moment, so I will keep trying.
All right, sorry that I should have known that you were on it. Thank you so much.
Apparently he's logged in on his phone, so that won't let me move him over.
It looks like Councilmember Lay, it looks like we got you in, so that's great. And we're still, we'll get started at 6:08, so it's 6:06 now. Councilmember Lay, we cannot hear you properly. You sound like a robot. Or the predator, maybe you sound like the predator. All right, let's try this again. It is 6:08, and so we will get started. Thank you everyone for your patience while we sorted out some technical difficulties this evening. I'll just reiterate for the group that there'll be public comment periods throughout the evening. And we encourage public participation, but you'll need to raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand button that you'll find at the bottom of your panel. Attendees who call in by phone can dial *9 and will be able to see a raised hand appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge you and the clerk unmutes you, you'll need to tell us your name and your address and your comments. And each person will have three minutes for their comments. So it's very helpful if you can help us by following these directions to maintain meeting decorum. We have a very full agenda this evening. And so just so everyone knows, we'll probably end the meeting right around 10:00 PM and we'll continue any things that have not finished by that point in the meeting. And we take breaks about every two hours so that folks keep their energy high and that we can all stay focused and working as effectively as we can. And so with that, I'll turn it over to our City Clerk, Meredith Mu, for a roll call.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton? Mayor Portem Maloney?
Here.
Caleb, Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
All seconded. Chris moved, I seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay and Councilmember Dickinson. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, the motion carries and the agenda is approved. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda and items that you find on our consent agenda. If any members of the public would care to comment on items that are not our agenda or items that are on our consent agenda, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Could I please get a motion from a council member to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, the consent agenda has passed. That takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on our agenda. Are there any council comments this evening for folks? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report. City Manager Balsor?
I have no comments this evening, thank you.
Thank you, and just so everybody knows, you'll find the manager's quarter two revitalization commission report to the city council that she provided for us in the packet there. So if folks want to read that, that's in our packet tonight. And that takes us to our first item of regular business, which is a resolution. It's resolution number 52, series 2021. A resolution approving a business assistance agreement with Yoga Junction for an economic development project in the city of Louisville. Our Economic Vitality Coordinator, Megan Pierce, I almost said Megan Davis. Megan Pierce is going to take us through that. Megan, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you tonight for the time to present this business assistance package, which is for Yoga Junction, which is an existing business in downtown Louisville. Melissa Williams is the owner of Yoga Junction. It currently operates at 927 Main Street in downtown, and it's been operating for about 10 and a half years. The business was not able to renew its lease on the existing property because it's becoming under new ownership. And so they've been looking for new commercial space in order to stay in downtown. The business is currently evaluating a lease at 950 Spruce Street, and the space has been vacant for a number of months. A little bit of background on the project, so Yoga Junction currently has a little over 1,100 square feet. Their proposed new location would occupy just under 1,500 square feet. And this also allows the business to expand its retail footprint. So because they are physically expanding their space, this makes them eligible for the Business Assistance Program. They currently have one full-time employee and 15 contractors. With the expanded business, they would be able to retain all of those jobs and hope to add actually a new full-time job in the future. Given the prior commercial use of the space, the tenant improvements will be required to set up a new yoga studio. The owner, Melissa Williams, hopes to make a decision on the lease by mid-August and then would hope to have the new studio open hopefully by the end of September. The project staff finds meets our BAP program criteria because it retains basic jobs to the city, retains existing sales tax, and hopefully will create new sales tax. It utilizes an existing building that has vacant commercial space and also will expand a current retail outlet. What we've proposed in terms of assistance is 50% rebate of building permit fees and construction use tax. That would be for their tenant finish work on the new space. That's capped at $700 based on the work they anticipate performing. And then a proposed 50% rebate on new sales tax over a five-year period. Because they are an existing business, this has been calculated to take into consideration the sales tax they already remit to the city on an annual basis. This would be capped at $500. They would need to complete the project by December 31st of this year and then remain in Louisville for five years in order to not repay any of the rebates received. Financial impact, rebates would total about $604 for the building permit fees and construction use tax, but the city would receive revenues of a little over $1,300. And then also based on the estimates of retail sales provided by the applicant, the business would pay $3150 in sales tax over a five-year period. As noted, we've subtracted an increment for what they have remitted on an annual basis. So rebates are estimated to be about $350 for sales tax. So the total fiscal impact is $955.13. The recommendation for staff is to approve the business assistance package, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Pierce, that takes us to our public comment period on this agenda item. Are there any members of the public that would care to add comment for this agenda item this evening? Seeing then, that takes us back over for council questions and comments. And any council member questions or comments, or would someone like to frame the discussion with a motion? Councilmember Dickinson?
Mayor, I just wanted to, I don't believe I need to recuse myself, but did want to make sure it was known that Melissa Williams is a good friend of mine. I have no financial ties to Yoga Junction or anything like that. So I feel comfortable staying in the conversation, but wanted to at least disclose that.
Thank you for the disclosure, Councilmember Dickinson, and for clarifying that you don't have any financial connection to the business in any way. Mayor Portem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Economic Vitality Director for her work on this and her presentation tonight. I believe BAPs are an important economic stimulus for the city. I think this one certainly meets all the criteria. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 52, series 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Maloney, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton, and then Councilmember Fahey, would you like to comment on the motion or add any discussion or questions?
I was just going to second the motion. I think the Economic Vitality Director did a lovely job in the presentation, and it does fit all the criteria. So I'm 100% in support of this.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Any other discussion on this topic this evening? All right, City Clerk Mu, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
I'm going to go Dickinson, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson, for clarifying. That works great, so the motion carries unanimously, thank you, everyone. So the next item of business this evening is ordinance number 10. I apologize, ordinance number 1810, series 2021. An ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the city at the November 2nd, 2021 regular municipal election, a ballot issue concerning increases in city debt and property taxes for the purpose of constructing transportation improvements and authorizing other actions regarding the conduct of such elections. This is our second reading and public hearing for this as advertised in the Daily Camera on the 18th of July, 2021. I'll open the public hearing and ask council members if they have any disclosures to make this evening. Seeing then, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Heather Balsor, to introduce the topic for us. Heather?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to turn this over to Kim Crawford, the city's bond counsel, to give the highlights of the ballot language. Thank you.
Hi, this is Kim Crawford. I'm bond counsel to the city, and I've been assisting with the preparation of this ballot question and the ordinance authorizing the election. This, as you know, has been a topic of discussion for a number of meetings that I have attended. And this is kind of the culmination of your efforts to actually get this on the November ballot. So this is a pretty brief ordinance, and what it does is that the recitals just kind of state that there's going to be an election, the county, the county is conducting a coordinated election. The coordinated, all taper matters need to go before the voters to be voted. This is a taper matter. Your city clerk is going to be the designated election official and work with the county clerk to make sure that all of the election details are complied with. And then it sets out just the form of the ballot question, which you have seen in the past. I'm going to go over the, again, just the high details of the ballot question. I'm not going to read it for you, it's in your packets, and I think it's available also online. But what the city is authorizing is debt not to exceed 51,420 with a maximum repayment cost of up to 90,240 and property tax increase of up to 3,786 annually or by such lesser amounts as may be necessary to pay the bonds back. And you're going to pay that with a limited mill levy of not to exceed 5.40 mils. This ballot question allows the bonds to be issued for the transportation purposes, which have also been discussed, and then the accompanying intent resolution will be discussed next. But essentially, the transportation improvements, including but not limited to the underpasses, bike paths, pedestrian walkways, trails, and related improvements. This ballot question also allows the city to use property tax revenue or any other available revenue of the city as hereafter determined by the council, which includes sales and use tax revenue and allows you to issue the bonds pursuant to those parameters. So that was a very high-level, down-and-dirty on the ballot question.
Thank you for the overview there. And so council members, I understand, some council members may have questions that sort of segue between the next agenda item and this agenda item. So if that's necessary for conversation, it's understandable. And so that will turn us over to our public, our first public comment period on this agenda item. So if any members, and given that this is an ordinance, there are two rounds of public comment on this particular agenda item. So if any members of the public have initial comments they'd like to make, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing then, that takes us back over for council questions and comments. Any council members have questions or comments they'd like to make this evening? Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I have a question of staff. I don't know who would be the best answer, but could you describe the mechanics that the city would go through on a year-to-year basis to determine how much city, other sources of city funds would be used to basically buy down the property tax? And how that would work on a year-to-year basis? And then how, how does that then get communicated to the county on a timely basis to ensure that the collection of tax reflects whatever the so-called buy-down would be?
And so that may be best for our finance director, Kevin Watson, to answer, but Kevin, maybe you know the best person on staff to turn that over to if it's not you. And actually, interestingly, I just may have called on someone who's not in the meeting. It looks like Kevin Watson's in the audience, City Clerk Mu, could you please move him over to the panelist side? All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I think the, as a general overview, the process that, the way we see it is that we would go through the budget process every year, and we would adopt the budget, the first part of November, and then based upon whatever appropriation or whatever budget that the council applied to the debt service fund that we will set up, we will then calculate what the remaining amount of property tax revenue is needed. At that point, we will certify the mill levy. The council will also approve the certification of the mill levy. And then in the first week of December, we will notify the county of what that certification is, what the mill levy is going to be. That's just kind of a general overview of the process.
And Director Watson, can you just add in what our process is now for certifying the mill levy?
The same.
Right, so I mean, so we do that each year with the certification of the mill levy, correct?
Right, we adopt the budget, appropriate funds, and then we certify the mill.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, so that happens on an annual basis now, right, Kevin?
That's correct.
Yeah, and then how do you, where in that process in the calendar does the LRC potential contribution fit in?
Well, it's my understanding with the agreement that has been approved by the council and the LRC, we will budget the receipt of the monies based upon that schedule that the LRC has agreed to during the budget process, and that will be a revenue budget for the city, an expenditure budget for the urban revitalization district. And then so that will also be calculated against the property tax that's necessary to pay the debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. Other questions or comments from council members? All right, not seeing any. I just, for folks tuning in, what we're talking about this evening is we've been working several months on determining if there's a question we can put to the voters around issuing debt to be able to build some transportation improvements, namely, some underpasses that have been identified by community members as high priority that we can't fund without issuing debt. And so council's been looking to see how much internal funding we can put toward that debt repayment to minimize the impact to property owners by way of property taxes. And so the Urban Revitalization District has done a memorandum of understanding with the council and made commitments to help us because some of the underpass improvements are in the Urban Revitalization District. And then council has made some preliminary commitments to use existing revenue streams to help pay back the bonds as well. But in any case, our bond counsel has advised us that we would want to issue bonds and the ability to collect mills for the entire amount of debt in order to back the bonds and get a good interest rate and give the credibility of the city. So that's what we're talking about this evening and trying to make sure that we all understand what we're putting forward for the voters, and then the voters would ultimately get to determine if they wanted to put this kind of thing into practice and bond for the revenue to be able to make the improvements. Any other comments or questions from council members? All right, not seeing any, that takes us to our last round of public comment on this agenda topic. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on this agenda topic this evening at this time? Thank you, the first commenter this evening is Maxine Ross.
Hi there, I'm actually really thrilled to see you guys doing this. I think these improvements are really critical for the city. The one thing that I would just ask to keep in mind, because I was looking over the agenda, and I don't know if this is the last, I just popped in, so I don't know if this is this one or the next one ever, but to be really mindful of prioritizing safe routes to schools. I'm sure, as you know, BDSM is facing serious busing issues, and there's a good chance that a lot of the buses we have that are now designated as dangerous routes may be cut because we simply don't have enough drivers. So I would just really encourage you to be thinking about prioritization in terms of making sure that kids who are within walking distances, you know, like LMS and other elementary, and the elementary schools, that if they can, you know, if you can just make sure we prioritize those improvements based on how we're going to get kids to school, would be really helpful for the community.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Were you finished there, Maxine?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Any other members care to comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to our final council discussion and any motions. We could have a motion to frame the discussion and any further questions or comments who come after that. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve resolution number 1810, series 2020, an ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the city of the November 2nd, 2021 regular municipal election ballot issue concerning increases in city debt and property taxes for the purpose of constructing transportation improvements and authorizing other actions regarding the conduct of such election.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Brown?
Awesome.
Thank you, and just to clarify for everyone, it's an ordinance that we're taking up. And so any further discussion on the motion that's on the table? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, I'll second, has the motion been seconded? I'm sorry.
I thought you seconded it.
Good, okay, great. Yeah, no, I'm happy to support the motion. I think, I really appreciate the work the council has done over the last several months. I know it's been a fast and furious thing, and we haven't, no one, I would say, has gotten everything that they wanted. But I think that this particular proposal represents the best consensus of our, of our group. And, and so, you know, I'm happy to support it and put it forth for the viewers, for the voters to approve. So, and the viewers, the viewers at home, everyone voting, viewing at home, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Mayor Portem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for making a motion, seconding it. This really does help frame the discussion. You know, one of the things that I want to say about this, and you know, these ballot issues, and because of taper, we have to structure these in such a way that it's almost like the worst-case scenario or a scenario that we may not even really consider. And, you know, as part of this packet, which I believe bond counsel and our financial advisors and all of the staff have done a really terrific job with this. You know, 51 million is really what we're talking about borrowing. We spent, I'm at 50 million spending on transportation projects. But we talked about increase in the property taxes, the number we're using in the ballot is really a 20-year, and, you know, we're going to get to the intention document next, which I think is really important. But this is, this is giving a lot of leeway in this process. And so we get to intentions doc, I want to talk more about, you know, how we're talking about doing this and the funding sources. But it's certainly, I support the concept, but I believe the intention aspect is important. And I kind of wish we had reversed these in the agenda, honestly, to make sure that we all agreed what our intention was before we agreed to put a ballot on there. But with that, I will be supporting this, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Maloney, and just as a point of order, I suppose that I'll raise to help alleviate your concerns you just raised. If we get, if we come to an impasse on the next agenda item, anyone voting in favor of this could make a motion to reconsider while we're still meeting today. So hopefully that puts to rest some of your concerns with the order on. Hopefully that, um, puts to rest some of your concerns with the order on the agenda. Councilmember Lipton?
I, I guess I have some of the same concerns that, uh, Proton Maloney was suggesting. I, I thought we would do this all together. And the fact is that this resolution is basically a property tax increase of three hundred and ninety dollars per residence, based on, uh. Average value, and, you know, I. I think my position has been in the past that I would be perhaps interested in what I call a very modest increase in tax if absolutely necessary. To supplement existing resources. That the city can already, uh, garner, contribute as well as the RRC. So, without having that conversation and understanding what the commitments are for those. I am, I really have difficulty voting in favor of this on face value. I thought we would be talking about the latter first. And the, uh, and then get to the tax, uh, language second. So, I, I, I would like to ask if there's way, still a way to do that, and if not, then that's fine, I'll just vote. Uh, I'll probably oppose the resolution as, as drafted, for that reason.
So I'll turn to the city attorney, and just in the, in the future, when you have a, a concern on the agenda order. When we're setting the agenda at the beginning of the meeting is a really great time to deal with that. Um, but, you know, now where we are, and so I'll just turn to our city attorney and ask if we can. Sort of pause the discussion on this ordinance and then go on to discussing the resolution of intent that council has next up on our packet and then come back. If there's a path forward for us to do that, could you please describe it, City Attorney Kelly?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I, I'm just pulling up the resolution. I think the reason why it was put on the agenda in this order is that the resolution. Um, references the ordinance adopted by the council to refer the ballot question and then expands upon. The council's intent. Um, you know, I think you, um. Gave a great solution, Mayor, to anyone who is not happy with the results after voting. On the ordinance and the resolution, um, and a motion to reconsider the ordinance can be made at this meeting. You know, if the, if the resolution were presented first, I mean, we certainly could have drafted it that way. Um, but, you know, it would be talking about a hypothetical action that the council might take. To refer a question to the ballot, and so I guess when we reviewed it at a staff level, we thought the resolution. Um, really would have more impact when it speaks to something that the council has referred to the voters. Um, rather than speculating on what might be referred to the voters.
Councilmember Lipton?
Oh, you know, I, I understand why you're, why you might have done that, but I think, uh, you know, there. If we do not come to agreement on the resolution of intent. Then we have nothing. And the first resolution stands, which is a three hundred and ninety-dollar per year property tax increase. So, I understand the intricacies of, of what you proposed in the process, but. It, uh, it seems like these two are integral to each other, and there should have been discussion on the resolution of intent. Like I said, if we're not happy with the resolution of intent, that dies, and then the only thing left that we have is the. Uh, three hundred and ninety-dollar per year property tax increase, and that stands, so. For that reason, I, I, I don't think it, unless we can find another path forward, I can't support this.
So I'll just re-describe what I had initially proposed, and I'll re, I'm committed to it. If, for some reason, the resolution of intent fails. Um, that I would make a motion to reconsider the ordinance right away, and so. We would go back and reopen this discussion, uh, that, the, so, that's a commitment I'm willing to make. I don't know if others are willing to make that same commitment. Um, but I feel like that is a path forward to address the issue that's been raised.
We have a order, Your Honor, can I, can I ask a question?
Councilmember Lay, please.
Yeah, it's a question for the city attorney, actually, is, uh, as I'm reminded, um, or I, I. I thought motions to reconsider needed five votes. I just want to make sure we're. I want to know what the shape of the, the table is here. Because that is a, I think, if I'm right, it's a super majority, and I, I think, I understand what the mayor's saying, I. You know, uh, when you have to have five votes, it's different than four. It's not, it's not just that we sort of. Can go back, we may not be able to if we don't have the votes to do that. Is that right, uh? City Attorney Kelly?
Um, Councilmember Lay, I'm looking up your rules of procedure right now. I don't have them. That rule committed to memory, so I can answer your question in a.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay, for that reminder and point of order. It, um. It does strike me that if we, for some reason, failed on the resolution of intent, that we would be pretty easy to satisfy. The, the discussion to reconsider, um, but. That might not be enough to make people comfortable, so I understand wanting to make sure we understand the process. So we'll just, the attorney finds that out.
Yeah, so the rule says it is two-thirds of the members, um, attending and voting on the matter at the meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly.
You know, Mayor, in, in light of that, um, I, I understand both, both sides of this. I, one of the things I'm. Um, I, I do appreciate, and I know everybody on the council appreciates, uh, is that. Uh, it, it's an awful lot of money that we're talking about, and it's never a bad thing to talk about. What it's intended to use, to use, to be used for before we approve it. It seems to me as a logic matter, I, I do understand, uh, the staff's, uh, and the city attorney's rationale for, for why they did it, but I. I'm wondering if, if we had that discussion, would there be anything lost? It just seems smoother if we could do that. Um, I, I guess I'd support that. I think it would be a little bit easier for folks in the, uh, audience to. Uh, when, you know, the, the folks at home and folks who are watching here and maybe for the purpose of the minutes and. Process, maybe just a little bit easier to do it that way?
So I have another question for the city attorney, um, in, in light of what Councilmember Lay just said, um. It, can we continue the ordinance to a time later in the meeting? Like, I know we often continue ordinances to a, a new meeting, um, but do we have any ability to continue and continue this item? To, say, after item C on the agenda?
Yeah, Mayor, I think probably the easier path would be simply to have a motion to reconsider approval of the agendas. The council approved the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and, and if that carries, then to make some changes to the agenda and reverse the order of these two items.
Thank you for that suggestion, and so before I entertain a motion, um, to reconsider the approval of the agenda, could I ask what I would need to do? We're sort of mid-stream in a public hearing, and so would I, what would I need to do to appropriately address where we are in the public hearing? Would I close the public hearing? Would I continue? I don't, I just don't know what I would need to do.
Right, um, yes, I see your point. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think a continuation of the public hearing, if the motion to, um. You know, change the order of the agenda would be appropriate.
All right, so Councilmember Lipton, I'll turn it back to you just to see if that is what you'd like to do at this time.
Uh, I was wondering if a simpler solution might be just a table, resolution number fifty-two. Go through resolution fifty-three and then basically untable fifty-two. But I, I, I would be fine with pathway just described.
All right, I think I asked sort of that question that you just outlined and was told that the better way to do it would be to reconsider the approval of the agenda.
No, I think that it, it's a, a semantical thing between continuation and tabling. I, I didn't know. That would cause a different, you know, outcome, a simpler outcome.
City Attorney Kelly?
Mayor, that, I think that there are a number of paths that you can take here, and. None of them are perfect and they're all a little bit awkward, so as the presiding officer, I would defer to your choices to the. Anything, all of the, um, options that you have discussed are fine from a legal standpoint, so whatever you think is the clearest path forward, I would defer.
Thank you, and so i- if it were just left to me as the presiding officer, we would just continue the conversation in good faith. Uh, because I think that's how we've gotten to this point so far, and we've had a lot of agreement about the resolution of intent. But Councilmember Lipton, I understand that that causes you a great deal of concern, so I'm turning to you to see if you would like to make a motion to reconsider the approval of the agenda.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor of, um, I suppose, is there any discussion of the motion to reconsider? Um, Councilmember Brown, and could you all just put your hands down for just one second, so I know which hands are now? The motion that's currently on the table is a motion to reconsider the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Brown?
Well, first of all, I'd like to correct Councilmember Lipton's, uh, comments about the property tax increase. Just because the voters incre, uh, approve a certain level of tax increase does not mean that this council will actually levy it. So, you know, if it were one mil, it'd be seventy, seventy dollars on a house. If it were up to the full amount, it would be more. Okay, so I think that's an important clarification that we need to go into this. We're not raising everyone's taxes. By three hundred and sixty dollars a year necessarily. Second of all, I think as a process point. It's, it's important that we approve the agenda at a particular time. Um, and while I appreciate everyone wanting to, to sort of talk about these things at the same time. I think it's also like, we've had the packet since Friday, no one mentioned that they wanted to change the order. Suddenly we get here, now we want to change the order. Uh, I think as a process point, Mayor. Um, it's a pretty partic, it's a particularly poor point, so, I'm, I'm going to vote against this, this, um, this particular.
Um, Councilmember Brown, you cut out just at the very end of your comments, at least on my side, but, um, so the motion that's on the table is a motion to reconsider the approval of the agenda. And I'm not seeing any other discussion. Um, and, you know, I think we all ha- have a good working relationship and have worked hard to get to this point, so I would just encourage us to. Give people the time to have the debate we need so that we don't let the process get in the way of the conversation or the actual discussion, and so. I would encourage everyone to vote to reconsider the approval of the agenda, so we can have the full debate on the merits of the topic and not get into. Just a tactical discussion on how we ought to do it. So with that, City Clerk Muth, if you could just, um, do a roll call on a motion to reconsider the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann? Yes. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. So, um, Councilmember Lipton, I'll turn to you and ask if you could make your comments on an amended agenda?
Uh, yes, I would propose that we switch in order of resolution number fifty-two, series two thousand twenty-one. With resolution number fifty-three, series two thousand twenty-one, as the order in the agenda.
Um, so just to clarify, we're taking a, I, I think what you mean to say is that you would switch items B and C, which is ordinance number eighteen-ten and resolution number fifty-three.
Um.
Resolution number fifty-two.
You're absolutely right, and I stand corrected, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So there's a motion to approve the agenda as amended, where we would, uh, swap items B and C, so we'll take up resolution fifty-three before. Ordinance number eighteen-ten. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and so, uh, where that takes us to in our agenda, and I'm just going to go over it so folks are following what we've done so far, is we're going to take up item C now. Which is resolution number fifty-three, series twenty-twenty-one, a resolution of intent regarding public transportation improvements to be submitted. To the voters of the city at an election to be held November second, twenty-twenty-one, and we'll have a staff presentation from our city manager. Heather Balser on this topic, and then we'll have public comments, council questions and comments in action. Once we're done with that, we'll go back and take up ordinance number eighteen-ten. So, City Manager Balser?
Mayor, can I, another point of order for just a second? In the, in the last vote. I, I didn't hear you call for nays. I don't know that there were any, but I wanted to just make sure there weren't.
I do know the motion carried. I definitely saw four people say yes, but I will go back. Um, and just clarify for the record if there were any people that voted against approving the agenda as amended. Seeing none, that takes us to where I was describing in the process. City Manager Balser?
Uh, sure, so, uh, resolution number fifty-three, series twenty-twenty-one that you have in front of you, so this is related to the city council's interest. In construct, constructing certain transportation improvements in the city consisting generally of underpasses, bike paths, pedestrian walkways, trails and act grade or related improvements. At a cost not to exceed fifty-one million, four hundred and twenty thousand. Um, which necessitates incurring debt and increasing the city's property tax mill levy for the payment of such debt. And.
City Manager Balser, I think we've lost you. Um, your microphone is still showing as unmuted, at least on my end, I'm not hearing you any longer. Can other folks hear the city manager? No. She's showing still on the meeting, but we'll get her back here. All right, this has been an evening filled with technical difficulties and.
Mayor, can, sorry, can you hear me now?
Now we can. Thank you, City Manager Balser, no problem.
I don't know what's going on, so, um, so I'm just, again, I'm just going to highlight the specifics of the resolution, and this is based on conversations that you all have had over the last few months. Um, and what, what we heard in relation to how, uh, what your expectations are moving forward. So again, although the, the ballot, uh, question allows the city to impose a limited mill levy up to five-point-four-five-oh mills annually in order to generate not more than. Three million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand in property tax revenue annually to pay for the debt. Is the current intention and expectation of the city that a significant portion of the annual repayment amounts will be covered by a city contribution of approximately. One point five million of unencumbered capital projects fund money annually, which may be increased on annual appropriations and other available revenue. In addition, the city contribution to the, excuse me, in addition to the city contribution, the Louisville Revitalization Commission has executed a cooperation agreement with the city. Providing that it would contribute, contribute between one point two-five and three million annually until twenty thirty-two. Depending on, um, the projects included to support the project and expected to be located within the urban renewal plan area. Um, so again, the resolution speaks to a number of items, uh, there's some bullets there, um, related again to the limits on the amount of the debt. To fund approximately fifty million in funds to construct the projects. Desire of the council to minimize the use of property taxes to repay the bonds. And to maximize other sources of revenue such as sales and use tax revenue and LRC revenue. Uh, in order to limit the size of the project, it is in the best interests of the city that the council prioritize the projects. And provide for their funding with the intent to complete all six in some manner within the fifty million construction budget. And maximizing leverage of internal funds beyond bond proceeds. Um, so again, it speaks to the one four, one point five million in CIP annually, um, or more, as well as, um. The LRC contributions over the next ten years. Um, lastly, the, uh, the city council determines that the project shall be funded in the following order of priority. Recognizing that that could change, um, based on a number of factors here that it speaks to, and then it lists the six locations in priority. Order based on previous conversations, and those six locations, uh, grade separated pedestrian bicycle crossings located at the six locations, Main Street and South Boulder Road. Via Appian South Boulder Road, South Boulder Road in proximity to the Highline Lateral Trail. The intersection of Colorado State Highway forty-two and Short Street, and South Boulder Road on the west side of Colorado State Highway forty-two. Um, so that's kind of the highlights of the resolution. Um, there are, there will need to be, um, continued conversation around budget implications. Internal sources of fund and LRC contributions as further design is, um, completed, and it's clear which projects will be moving forward within the budget. And, uh, and, and determine the, the final property tax mill levy as well. Um, so, and issue bonds in the second half of the year of twenty twenty-two. So, um, that's, that's kind of the highlight, and, uh, happy to answer any questions as well as. Bond council and financial advisors who are on the meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Balser, and so I just want to thank all the many community members who have gotten us to this point, so we have heard. So we have heard from, um, folks around school routes, just like we did tonight, but we've heard previously around that. In our small area plans, we've heard from community and the, our community members about, um, unsafe crossings. Children have actually been hit crossing the street, uh, with just bicycle connections, business improvement, having better access and connectivity to business districts. Um, so we have been hearing from people for many years, um, about different connections and connectivity gaps that we have. And as the community has added more development in the north parts of town, it has exacerbated some of the needs where there are people on the north side of South Boulder Road that can't safely get to the south side, and people on the south side that want to go to their friends' homes and businesses on the north side that can't safely to the north side, and other locations in town too. So I really thank the community for raising awareness of this issue, for bringing these things forward, and then, um, for trying to look for solutions. So, uh, next thanks goes to the Lewisville Revitalization District. I really think they've done an outstanding job of coming to the table to try to collaborate with us to be able to minimize the cost to voters through property tax revenues by, uh, making a memorandum of understanding with us and making significant, uh, contribution through that memorandum of understanding, should the voters decide that these improvements are important to them. So thank you so much to the LRC, um, for coming to the table, for really looking closely at these projects and committing to continue to work on this with us in the future, if the voters say they would like to have these underpasses funded. And so that significant contribution from the LRC is on the order of eighteen million dollars. And so that would significantly pay down the cost, so that we wouldn't have to utilize the entire five mils. Additionally, I want to thank my fellow council members for looking at our budget and for looking to where we could, um, use internal funding. So we've talked about significant internal funding on the tune of one point five million dollars a year that seems available to go to toward these types of transportation improvements. And the council's made a commitment to build that into our, um, budget. So with all of those commitments of existing revenues, I think there's a really good program we could put together that would enable us to minimize the need to levy, uh, mils against people's property tax, depending on how it's structured and exactly what interest rate we get and exactly what payments council commits to. It does change the amount per year, but as Councilmember Brown alluded to, it's significantly less than the entire amount. But I do appreciate the advice we've gotten from bond council that suggests we would still have to ask for the entire amount, so that the credibility of the city and that we have full faith for whoever we go to, uh, seek the bonds, they would know that there are mechanisms to pay it back. So I just want to, um, I hope everyone heard all the thanks. I hope all my fellow council members heard the thanks to them for all the hard work that's put in. And last, I want to thank the city staff. Um, the staff have really come together to look at this and raise the urgency around this, um, given that this was a priority in our work plan, and try to come up with something that we can put forward to the voters to find out if this is something we should keep working on in the future or not. So thank you so much, everybody. And if there are, um, you know, amendments we need to make to the resolution of intent to make it more clear, to make sure that it captures what council was intending to do and the spirit of what we're intending to do, please bring those forward. We want it to be our best foot forward, um, because as soon as we vote tonight, we step out of the picture and we don't get involved anymore. So I thank you all deeply, and I'll turn it over to other council members for their questions, comments as well. Mayor Portem Maloney?
Um, Mayor, were we going to have public comment before our comments and questions?
Uh, if you'd like me to, that's fine. I, um, yep. There are people in the queue, so I was going to call on the council members whose hands are in the queue, and then I was going to take public comment.
Um, okay, whatever. You know, my feeling about this is, this is, uh, a very, very important conversation. You know, setting our intent and, and what we're expecting to do. And, um, you know, maybe Council Brown was right, I should have brought this up earlier, but, um, you know, in retrospect, we're looking at Ordinance Eighteen Ten, and it does say we're going to raise property taxes. It really doesn't get to the intention document or this resolution that we're talking about. So, uh, I apologize if I've helped create that by not, you know, doing a better job of making sure that the agenda was in an order that, to me, makes better sense. But our intention with this, I think, is pretty clear in this document. It's something that, um, you know, I've provided input, um, at council meetings, I've provided input during the creation of this. And, you know, to me, it's, it's very important to minimize whatever we do, um, as far as, uh, property taxes, because I think we have significant, um, funds that we can use, first being the, the CIP. Um, and as this document says, um, you know, one and a half million for the first year, uh, maybe next yearly half of that, but certainly years beyond that. We should be looking at what those normal increases in collection of CIP sales taxes are and be able to increase over time, because I believe if we do that, that is one of the very important elements of minimizing property taxes, um, through the life of whatever twenty or thirty year we, we intend to do this. I also believe the, the significant contribution coming from the Lewisville Revitalization Commission, number one, is very much welcomed. It's, uh, it's something they deliberated on, and it's something that really makes a different, I, difference, I believe, in the urban renewal district. And they stepped up with a, um, one of the options being, um, over eighteen million dollars if we complete the South Boulder Road in Maine, as well as the Highway Forty-two and Short Street, or wherever it ends up being. So for me, that, that, I will get to it, but I think we need to be considering a, a priority order around that. We also have some general fund reserves that should be considered, um, over whatever the repayment period is. Um, and we, staff has been working on grants for some of these as well. And those can help pay for some of the construction costs that may mitigate the amount that we have to spend on some of these things. But that, as far as the intention document goes, I think it's very clear, it's very important. Um, and to me, I honestly would not, uh, approve the ballot issue without this intention resolution saying what we're intending to do. And, um, you know, I'm hoping that we're going to approve both of these tonight. And for me, the resolution is a direction that I, as we work through this, you know, I, I believe the ballot issue, uh, has, will likely be passed, uh, which means in the winter time, we will be talking about how we're going to do this and how we're going to fund the repayment of this. And I believe it's important, and I will, I will stick to this, because I believe we are passing a resolution, and it is our commitment to the citizens of Lewisville. This is how we're intending to pay for it. So just one comment on, on the resolution that I would suggest to be considered by my colleagues. I'd like to hear a discussion, so I'm not prepared to make a motion. But item number five is Colorado State Highway Forty-two and Short Street, which is currently ranked fifth. And that's one of the ones that we would get significant funding from the LRC if we ensure it gets done. And because of that, I suggest that we moved up to two or three in the priority list. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor Portem Maloney, and it's fine for you to say no to this, but just to facilitate the discussion, could you pick a location where you're proposing putting it, so that if people can just agree with it, then they can just say, I agree with that, and we don't have to?
Sure. They, thank you very much for facilitating that. I would say number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so next in the queue, we have Councilmember Lay.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. I've got kind of three points that I thought I would, uh, make. I mean, first of all, is, is sort of a bigger picture issue of sort of why we're doing this. I, for people who, uh, are, are put off by the number, and the number is very big. There is just no question, uh, you know, these, these projects are ones that have been identified in a variety of, of areas, uh, for many years. Uh, transportation master plan, we've discussed them in council for years and years, uh, LRC has as well. We have a pretty good sense that they're what people want. But we can't pay for them, not with our current funds. And, um, we had discussions some years ago about, gee, maybe this is a good thing to put in front of the voters and see if truly they're interested in this enough to, uh, you know, to float bonds, if that's what we choose to do, uh, perhaps raise their taxes if that's necessary. So that's why we're here today. I think proposing something for the ballot is, you know, we will drop out. Uh, we, we aren't permitted to sort of, uh, cheerlead as a council member for this. Once it goes to the voters, um, we just have the opportunity to send it to voters. And I think, you know, what we're doing, and we put a lot of energy into it, and I think it's a, a good package, but I recognize that that is going to be for the voters to decide. Second point I wanted to, uh, make in all of this is I share Councilmember Lipton, and I think probably most of the council members, if not everybody, that we want to minimize tax burden, additional tax burden on people who are coming out of the pandemic. A lot of people have had some pretty significant, uh, hits to their incomes and so forth. And, uh, I know with, um, you know, with people on fixed income, this is, these are issues for, this is going to potentially make a difference to them. So, uh, I think we do have to keep in mind and keep very much in, in front of us the idea of minimizing tax burden to the extent that we can, and to be very clear with the voters what we are asking them, what we may be asking down the road, what's possible. That's the reason for this language, which is, as some have said, kind of worst-case language. And I, I think it is important to be talking about the potential mills that might be levied, even if those aren't being levied right now, because we're asking for that authority. And so, um, you know, I think we need to be honest. I, you know, I, I'm going to be running, uh, for reelection this fall, and I want to be able to, to tell voters, uh, as I look them in the eye, what the worst-case scenario is on this and, and what's possible, uh, both, both sides. So, uh, that's my second point. I think the third point has to do with LRC. I served on the Lewisville Revitalization Commission, I've won two hats through this process. I too am very, very proud as, wearing my counselor's hat, very proud of the LRC for having done an enormous amount of work under very tight time restrictions in evaluating, uh, the package that is, that we're considering tonight. Uh, extraordinarily good comments, really find, uh, folks on their good input and, uh, produced, you know, and I was a part of that, so I, I, all of us produced a, um, you know, a resolution of cooperation that, that I think, or cooperation agreement that this council has approved, that, um, uh, is going to be, uh, solid. I, I think, as you know, and as the mayor alluded to just a little bit ago, there is, um, there has been a big change in the geography of this since the last time we dealt with it. And that change in the geography, at least the last time we dealt with it substantively, the last time we dealt with the priorities substantively. And that is that, um, LRC has said, if only one of the, i- if the underpass at Main Street, um, and South Boulder Road is completed, then during the course of the, uh, the payments of the bonds, they're committing seven point seven five million dollars. A sizable amount would be, and is most appreciated, I know, by all of you. If, on the other hand, another underpass in the, uh, urban renewal, um, area is approved or is, is built, and that is the one at, uh, South Street slash Short Street uh, and Highway Forty-two. That number that will be pledged by the LRC rises, as was said, to nearly nineteen million dollars. Now, that is very important to me, um, in terms of the potential, uh, ability to be able to apply that money and to avoid, um, some, uh, some of the tax burden that I said we need to be avoiding, at least I believe, and I believe most of my fellow council members believe that. And so I think it's critical that we not leave those funds on the table. And I can tell you from being in the debates with LRC and that, that absolutely they are, all hundred percent of the people on the LRC want to spend that money in that way and assist with this transformative project. So it's really important, I think, for us to be making use of those funds and to reflect that in the, um, resolution that we adopt tonight. And, um, you know, we, we, um, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I think we've got a number of things to talk about, so, uh, I'm, I'm glad to wait on that. But I would also, uh, unequivocally, um, uh, encourage the council to be moving, uh, that, uh, second, um, project. That is, uh, the, uh, Highway Forty-two and Short slash, uh, this, the, the Highway Forty-two, Short Street, uh, underpass to, um, the, uh, number two slot. Um, I think we, we have had a lot of discussion about what is number one. I think for a bunch of reasons, which I need to, to reiterate, uh, I, I think we've all agreed, number one. Well, number one, I think we've had a little more disagreement on others, but not huge amount. But I think we have a big change to take advantage of. I think it would be a mistake, and I think it would be, I, I couldn't do it and, and continue to believe that I was, that I was fulfilling my responsibilities to the voters and taxpayers, uh, unless I advocated very strongly for that, uh, number five on our list to be moved to number two. So, uh, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
So just, thank you. Uh, Mayor Portem Maloney and Councilmember Lay laid out a case, uh, for renumbering, and I'm not trying to cut off any discussion, um, around that. But if, I just want to see if there's consensus from the group to renumber the order in the resolution of intent, so that it would be Main Street, Forty-two and Short Street, and then the rest of the list would follow in the order that we deliberated around last time. Our folk, is there consensus that that would be an all right thing to move forward with? All right, council, though, just on that topic, um, before we move on, Councilmember Brown, do you want to discuss a different order or propose something else?
Yeah, I, 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 um, thank you, uh, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I think in previous meetings, I have definitely made it clear that, um, I'm very interested in the, the, the underpass on Dillon, um, and that, uh, you know, I really believe strongly that it, it deserves to be in the number two spot. Um, I think I would be willing to kick up the, the, the Short Street, um, underpass to number three, um, but I, I, I'm not, uh, I'm not comfortable demoting, um, the, uh, the, the Dillon Road underpass, uh, right now, so.
Would other council members? So let me just say that, you know, we've all probably run our spreadsheets, we've all looked at this a number of different ways. I think even by staff estimates, it looked like the top three, uh, even in that scenario where we'd have the forty percent contingency and left, I think it was five percent inflation. I don't have the numbers in front of me. Sort of like our, um, you know, conservative scenario, um, the top three would be funded. If you look at other scenarios, you can fund more. You can even, you know, fund four, five and six, um, depending if we value engineer some of the things out and this and that and the other. So, um, just given that the top three, uh, in there looks good, even with the contingencies, uh, our folks, could there be consensus around that proposed order that Councilmember Brown put on the table to have Main Street, Dillon, and then insert Highway Forty-two and Short there, and then the rest of the numbers follows, we deliberated? Is there consensus around that proposal? No. So it looks like the council, um, is, the majority is, um, comfortable moving that order to be Main Street and then Highway Forty-two and Short, and then the rest of the list follows in the order we debated before. So let's consider that matter. So let's consider that matter resolved on just that one point. It looks like everyone nodded yes or no or thumbs up in, in their show. And Councilmember Brown, I appreciate you bringing the points forward. Very well said. And so we'll just put a pin in that piece and now we can continue talking about the other pieces of the resolution of intent. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. See, I think one point of clarification. If we're able to get the funding that we think we're gonna get from our internal sources and the LRC and, and the cost below, we're not capable of also raising taxes as well, right? We, we are capped at how much we can be raising in total, right? Or is there? Am I confused? I just, one of my thoughts, I guess, the reason, the reason I ask, which maybe would help get the answer out that I'm looking for is if there are cost overruns and, and the 1.5 million, then the money we're talking about getting internally isn't enough, my sense would be like, well, we don't need to go to the taxpayers for more just because the, the costs are overrunning. We would need to go if for some reason we weren't able to access this money and that kind of thing. But we wouldn't be capable, would we be capable of sort of, I kind of think of as double dipping of, of both taking the tax and using our internal funds to end up spending 80 million dollars. Is that impossible for us to, to do that?
So I think I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, who might turn it over to Bond Council, just to talk about what we're bonding for and how we structured that. And that may answer your question. Director Watson?
Yeah, and I'm sure Jim or Bond Counsel, Kim can jump in here, but remember, we're, we're assess, we're, we're assessing the mill levy to pay the debt service. So once the bonds are issued for a certain amount, it's the debt service amount that we're issuing the mill levy for. And I'll let Jim and Kim talk on that also.
This is Kim. I don't know if, I don't see Jim yet, but
He's here.
Okay, thank you. Kevin is correct. This resolution of intent is to minimize the property tax levy that you're gonna impose. So, so you're not telling the, your, your citizens and taxpayers that you're gonna use that extra money to increase the amount of your projects. That's what the resolution of intent says. I think, you know, certainly legally, I think you could if you wanted to do that at some point in the future. But right now, I think what you're doing is just trying to minimize how much property tax levy you're gonna impose in every year. And that's gonna be used to pay, pay your bonds down based on this project of approximately 50 million dollars.
And, and Kim, can you just like clarify for us? We can't bond for more than the 50 million dollars. I mean, the, the amount
50 million, yeah, 50 million, 140 or whatever the number is, but no, you can't bond for more than that.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I think, I think what I wanted to be clear on is, you know, obviously, we're doing this resolution of intent and I think it's been very clear in all of our previous conversations that our intent is to fund as much of the underpasses as we can with, with internal funds. And then if we have to go to the taxpayers for some, we will. And then I understand that part of the reason we're creating a bigger amount in the, in the question is, is to protect ourselves and get better interest rates and guarantee our loans. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with all that. I do, I, it does seem that we would have the ability as council to say, wow, we do not have the internal funds in 2028 to be paying this debt. So we need to go to the taxpayers and increase the levy to actually do what we, I don't know, threatened isn't the right word, but, but what was possible, this worst case scenario. If the budget fails and we do need to go to the taxpayers, we are able to service our debt. And that's, that's the point of doing this night. So I get that and I think it does make this resolution so important. And I, I just, I'm just concerned, and I don't think there's a solution other than what staff has done a great job creating, that, that the voters say no because the number's so big and they don't understand that the, the ways in which what we're doing here in this resolution, right? That, that, no, 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 don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. And I know it looks like you might pay all this money, but, but you probably won't because we're planning on not actually taxing you a lot. And if they really understand that, then I think they're happy to vote for it. But if they read the ballot match and go, well, it's a lot, that maybe they don't pass it and then we don't even get to bond for it and then we don't get to do the projects. So that's my only concern with having such a big number. And I, and I get that it's important for securing the best rates, but I just, I just get concerned that that's, that could end up putting a kibosh on the whole thing. But as far as this resolution goes, Mayor, and I think I can, in my comments there is, I, I am in support of what the move that we did. And I am in support of this intention to use as much as possible from our funds. And it certainly seems with the move up to number two, we do have even more funds at our disposal, so even less likely to go to the taxpayers. So I'm in total support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. I, I have, I think, just three or four questions. And my first question, I guess, is of staff or bond counsel on on the concept of a resolution of intent. So, you know, my experience on public finance and bond issuance, I've never really come across a resolution of intent. And I was wondering if, how normal and customary this is and, and really what weight of law does it carry, if any at all?
This is Kim. I'll, I'll jump in. I, I see it occasionally. I don't see it a lot. I know that the city and County of Denver has done it in the past with their, their big issuances. Couple of school districts I've worked with have done it. And I, I think what is unique here is that, as has been discussed, you know, because of the way the bonds are sold, the people who, who buy these bonds wanna know that they're gonna get paid back. And so we do have the maximum numbers in the ballot question and that number of mills imposed would, would be sufficient to pay your bonds back. That is not your intent. Your intent is to use other sources of revenue. However, you don't know exactly what those revenue sources are yet. Because it's just uncertain. You don't know how much sales tax you're gonna have each year. You have to budget each year to see how much you're gonna have available. So really, the resolution of intent is, is really just your intent and how, how you're planning on moving forward. This is not binding on future councils because, you know, other councils can change this if that's something that they choose to do. You're just telling the voters what, what your intent is to do right now. Certainly, the voters can come back to this, your citizens come back to this and tell you, this is what we, we expected and we anticipated. And, you know, this is what we thought you'd promised us. And so I think it is something that you're certainly obligated, but not necessarily legally bound to continue forever and ever.
So, Kim, does this become part of the official statement or is this just, you know, something we're gonna do and it has, you know, it isn't disclosed to the buyers of the bond?
I, I would say it would be. Again, just, just basically, the official statement would be, for those of you who don't, who don't know, is, it's the document that's used by the bond underwriter to sell your bonds to the market. And it discloses all of the financial information and information that is customarily used for an investor to make an informed decision. So I, I think part of that story that, that we would tell as your bond counsel and underwriters counsel or disclosure counsel is, yes, you can impose this property tax, but additionally, the city is intending to pay this. Your, your LRC is intending to pay this and this is your project list and this is how you expect to spend your bond proceeds. So I think that all would get disclosed to an investor. And maybe, again, maybe Jim Munir can reiterate that, but I think that would be a good thing for them to know.
Kim, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I think I, I just simply say that at the time of the issuance of the bonds, you know, we, the, the legal constraints really and the legal compliance issues center on the language of the ballot itself, that the, the ballot language is approved by the voters. So as long as the, the, the issuance complies with the language of the ballot itself, you know, I think those, the bonds will be marketable. I think the expression of the council's intent certainly is relevant to investors. But investors are primarily concerned with, does it conform to, and is the issuance valid under the, the constraints created in the ballot language as approved by the voters?
Thank you. Yeah, I think at some point in this conversation, we maybe should discuss, you know, how committed we are to the intent. I mean, I, I don't want this to be kind of a fungible mechanism where we're trying to do this really to, you know, market a ballot issue. And, you know, I know it's all personal and how we're looking at the fu- future of the finances of the city and what our aspirations might be. And, and I also know, you know, we'll, we'll all be gone at some point and there'll be new councils that can think of this a little bit differently. But I am concerned about the fungibility of all this and I understand why we're trying to do this, this way. But, you know, I, I think we really need to say we're committed for some period of time. This is our financial plan. These are our financial commitments and we're not just trying to do this, you know, just to get through an election. And Mayor, if you could help facilitate that conversation a little bit later, I think that would be, you know, certainly helpful. I do have a couple of other questions. In the, in the first, in the summary on page 181, the first sentence, it, it says, "Council is interested in constructing certain transportation improvements of the city consisting generally of underpasses, bike paths, pedestrian walkways, trails, at-grade or related improvements" defined as the project. But when we get to this list of priorities that we were just starting to talk about, it's all centered around underpasses and six underpasses. And I'm wondering if we could not make that or make this a little bit broader in terms of where the money might be programmed so that we don't ignore opportunities for other things, whether it's for safe routes, it's for on-grade type of opportunities, perhaps hawk signals. It seems like we're, you know, the, the, the definition of the priorities seems to be a bit inconsistent with the flexibility that's contained in the summary. So I'd like to have a little bit of conversation on that to see if that can be reconciled. I have a third question and, and that is on page, sorry, I'm getting a little lost. We, we talk about the various sources of funds that we plan to use, like the CIP and LRC and everything, but we don't really say anywhere in here what the, the net effect of applying those funds might be to what the mill levy would ultimately have to be. So we, you know, we're talking about the worst case scenario. Of course, we have to do that, you know, legally in terms of issuing the bonds. But we don't message anywhere in here what we think the net effect would be. And I'm wondering if we're missing an opportunity in the resolution of intent to, you know, communicate that. And I think it's, that would be very important in terms of our so-called, I won't say marketing, but, you know, trying to get voter support for this if they knew it's not gonna be necessarily 390 dollars a household, it's gonna be bought down or intent is to buy it down to something less with the 1.5 million annually from the CIP, the LRC contribution and any other of the funding that we might have been contemplating on this. So I, I, I throw that out to the group for some conversation also, because it may actually help us if we are able to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
I know Mayor Protan Maloney and myself both talked to the city manager about that, so I'll turn it over to City Manager Balsor. And maybe you wanted to turn it over to Bond Counsel to explain why we're not, why staff's not included that in the packet.
Yeah, so, so I, I guess I would say at this point, there's still a lot of unknowns. And, you know, previously, like, for example, the LRC contribution, having, based on previous conversations, self, the 42 and Short underpass was fifth. And so that, that was, so there's a lot of uncertainties and pricing and those kinds of things. So to include a expectation around what exactly payments will look like at this point, didn't feel like we'd had that conversation or we could make assumptions at this point. Certainly, that will happen as we get closer to making decisions. And then in chatting with the Bond Counsel, she did not suggest including, for example, what we think it may look like in terms of what the tax increase may be based on certain contributions, because that is still so unknown at this point, but I'll, I'll let Kim respond.
Yeah, my, my concern is misleading the voters. And, you know, what you, what you can always go back to is the maximum annual amount of the property tax that you can impose is 3.786 million per year. If the city contributes 1.5 million in sales tax revenue, that cuts it, you know, almost in half. And then if LRC contributes 3 million, you're not gonna have to even raise the property taxes at all. The, the issue is, is I don't, I, I would not recommend, and I did not recommend that you show those numbers because again, I, I, my concern is that there will be just information, miss, maybe misinformation because we just, there's just too much uncertainty right now. And again, it looks like Jim's hands up as well, but
Kim, can I just ask for clarification? Do you mean both in the resolution as well as the ordinance? Or are you saying that we can't mention any of this even in the resolution of intent?
Yeah, I think the resolution of intent also should not mention it because, again, I don't wanna mislead voters. I don't want them to come back and, and point fingers at you and say, this is what you told me I was gonna be paying. Assess values can change, property taxes, you know, all these, there's too many variables right now. And until we actually know or the city actually knows what you're gonna be getting, it's, it's really hard to make promises to your taxpayers as to exactly what their payments are gonna be or what their property tax is gonna be, how it's gonna be impacted.
Thank you. Let's let Mr. Munir weigh in.
Thank you. I'll just follow up on what Kim was describing in terms of the things we don't know. By saying the circumstances year to year will be quite different. In other words, we can't necessarily say that the same facts that would apply to your mill levy certification for collection in year 2030 would be the same as it would be in year 2040. And in fact, the LRC contribution will sunset at some point during that timeframe. So we can't say generally that the same decision, fact, points will be influencing your mill levy certification in each year that you're repaying the debt. In fact, they're likely to be different. And that, and that would back into your determination or the determination of the city council at the time as to what mill levy should be certified.
Thank you, Mr. Munir. So that takes us to Councilmember Lipton. I saw you, I thought you said you were completed, so I was gonna move on, but it looks like you wanted to have a follow-up question. Councilmember Lipton?
Well, sure. Based on, based on staff's calculations with, with the LRC contribution and the 1.5 million annually from CIP, would, that still trigger a gap that we would have to use for a property tax mill levy increase? I mean, based, just on, based on what we know now and whatever assumptions we've been working on with our business and financial plan.
I'll let, I'll let Kevin answer that. I mean, it, it all depends. I, I mean, I just, I, I, I think there's a good chance that the property tax increase may be very minimal if you need one at all. But again, I just, so I'll, I'll let, I'll let Kevin respond. We started to run some numbers and our plan is during, the plan is to bring that back to you during the budget discussion in terms of providing at, at the minimum, the 1.5 and then looking at options around those, around that issue. So I'll, I'll leave it to Kevin at this point.
Director Watson?
I don't know if there's a whole lot I can add. We have run some numbers on this thing, but I don't think anything's ready for prime time or publication on this. I think the only thing I can say is we definitely don't expect, you know, certifying 5.45 mills for this, but I, I, I don't think, I'm not really prepared to go beyond anywhere than that, really. I, I mean, if you want, I mean, I can get together with Jim and we can run some pro formas and stuff like that, but I'm just not, I just don't have that, all that information in front of me tonight.
Thank you, Director Watson. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate what Councilmember Lookman was saying about expressing our intent. And I think that's what is really important about this particular document. And that he's right on that we need as a council to be very committed to the, to the intent that's expressed in this particular resolution. I know I am personally very committed to this resolution. And, and so, you know, even as, you know, different, the council changes, you know, I would hope that those folks, those council members who still remain, remind, remind the rest of the council of the commitments that have been made. I also hope that voters, should we deviate, should this council deviate from that intent, would hold us accountable one way or another. So I'm very committed to the intent here. Even though I have said I have not gotten everything that I wanted and I did not get something that I wanted even tonight. So, but I think that's, I think that's important that we sort of recognize that, you know, the best advice of our bond council and the way that the, the ballot initiative itself is structured is important, but that the intent of the council is equally important and in selling the, the, this particular initiative to voters will really rely upon sort of the intent. And if, and if Councilmember Lookton, if you would like to draft something to make it more clear exactly that our intent is to make sure that the property tax, that as much of this is funded through existing revenue and as little of this is funded through any property tax or that it's our intent to try to have no tax increase if at all possible. You know, I would, I would welcome that amendment and I would also, you know, wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And so we're going to go back to folks and they have another round of comments. And I just want to put a couple more pins and things that I think we'll be able to reach consensus on before we go back through that. So Councilmember Lookton raised the point of understanding how committed everyone is to the 1.5 million a year. And Mayor Protem Maloney raised a point early on about that 1.5 million commitment and actually making sure that that amount stays flat, meaning that as our revenues grow over time, like if you look at our budget, we grow 3% a year, that we would keep that contribution flat over time by inflating it. I'm probably saying this wrong, so when I turn it back to you, Mayor Protem Maloney, if you'll describe your proposal again more clearly to folks than I just have tried to summarize it, that would be helpful. But I just want to get sort of a show of folks is, I believe in previous discussions, there's been no wavering to the commitment of using the 1.5 million a year of existing revenues for repayment. And the most recent example of that is when we were in our budgeting discussions, we had consensus to put that into our budget as a placeholder in our five-year CIP to include, we gave direction to staff to include that line item. So if I could get just a, you know, signal from folks if there's more debate to be had on this point or if everyone's clear that there's a commitment from this council to put forward the 1.5 million. And Councilmember Lay, did you want to add something?
And I'm, I'm sorry, I've had a, I've had to be on my iPhone tonight. I've had computer trouble here and my fingers are in my face here and everything else as I'm trying to get through. But I think the one thing that, I mean, again, I'm trying to think in terms of sort of balancing, number one, that we're serious about the intention that we have. Because this is a point in time decision and, and we really do need to, to represent that to the voters. But what I hear from bond council, and I think I've heard this elsewhere, is that, and I know we heard it in the LRC discussion, was that, well, maybe down the road, there may be contingencies that, that change the order. Now, I can be, I can certainly state what my intent is. I certainly can't state what a future council's intent is and I can't, I don't want to be going to the voters and saying, oh, but, you know, this is never going to change. Because if, if it is, if there's a chance of it changing, I don't want to be that, that strong. But I think I can make, you know, a moral commitment that this, that's why we're, you're not fighting about it, but that's why we're having these discussions is because we care about the order and so forth. So to me, I don't want to overstate, I mean, I want to be accurate in what we're doing here. And, and I want to be, I want to honor the, the intention of what Councilmember Lookton is talking about and Councilmember Brown and, and others of us. But I, I think we all have to recognize that it's not, this is not, you know, it's not language that necessarily can bind people. And that just, I just want to make sure we don't, we don't overstate something. We just, you know, promise something, we can't deliver.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. So I, I believe section one of the intention document does clearly define things in a way that reflects what you just described. But I think what Councilmember Lookton was looking for was more of a discussion that, to see that folks have really thought through this, that they have the resolve to commit to doing this and that, you know, there's not going to be a turning around in a few months. That I think he raised points that maybe some people might have taken some offense to suggesting that this would just be a sales tactic, you know, and not an actual commitment. And so I think we're trying to clear the air on that point that he brought up to make it clear that this is an actual commitment, at least from the seven of us today at a point in time. And we're putting it in our resolution document that this is not just some kind of, you know, we're going to say one thing and then do another. We're absolutely committed. This is our intention today. This is what we mean to do. And if you read the language in it, if there is some kind of unforeseen thing in the future, there is language that says that would be addressed in the future. So it's not for certain, but it's absolutely our intention today. So I don't know that this is going to ever make everyone 100% happy, but I'm trying to facilitate that discussion that Councilmember Lookton was asking for to ensure that folks are actually committed to the 1.5 million. So it looks like there are commitments from everyone that's on this existing council and that is captured in the intent document in section one. Mayor Protem Maloney.
I think it was a bit of a legacy hand. I had some clarification along the way. But one of the things I'd like to say, and I agree with the points you made, Mayor, but, you know, the $3.7 million annual repayment is based upon a 20-year bond. And I don't think it's our intention to go with 20-year. I think we've been looking at 30-years. So when you start looking at one and a half million from CIP, the contribution from LRC, the math says, and if we increase that amount coming from the CIP based upon some normal inflationary aspect, that really leads us to minimizing any need for property taxes. And so I was one of those that pushed for the intention document. I know it is awkward. And it doesn't lock us in. And I understand the comments made by bond councilor and our financial people about not putting something in there that sort of defines and locks us in because there are still uncertainties in issuing the bond and, you know, what we might be. But I would not approve the ballot without an intention document and having everyone nodding their heads that they agree that we'll work towards trying to do this. Because I don't think it's the time to raise property taxes, but we could, if we could do it with other sources of revenues, then I'm all for that. So I, I understand where Councilor Lookton is coming from. And, you know, I'll be off council in two years. Some of you will be off four years, six years, whatever it might be. And there'll be different councils. They may change this. But I think if we set a course, we can all agree upon this and we can set a course. I believe future councils will understand our intention and honor it. And if there are situations that come up, then they have flexibility to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Did you want to make, so I wrote down at the very beginning, the comments you made. You had priority order, which we've taken care of. And then you had this point around repayment and the inflationary factor. Is there language that needs to change in the intention document to address that point you brought up? And the last one you brought up was general fund. And is there a point in the document that needs to be changed to address your comments about additional general fund contribution?
How many questions did you ask me?
Sorry, I'll start with this one. So the, the normalizing the repayment. So if we started at 1.5 million in our, you know.
That's covered in the fifth whereas. Maybe increase each year based upon annual budget appropriations.
All right, great. And so you're comfortable with that language?
I am. I guess one question for the city manager. This does say unencumbered capital projects fund. Does that need to be expanded to include general fund and in the case, we might use reserves to make payments?
City Manager Balsor.
That was just based on previous conversations that the money would come from the capital projects fund. So if you'd like to change it, we can absolutely do that.
We could say, I don't know, and/or.
And I'll just turn to Councilmember Lay for the language so that, Councilmember Lay, do you have a preference on how we would include, so it's in that third whereas clause? So Mayor Protem Maloney is suggesting that the money might come from the capital projects fund or the general fund?
It's the fifth whereas.
And so he suggested and/or, and I didn't know if you would be okay with that or how you would like us to phrase it. So I'm turning to you, Councilmember Lay, for your recommendation. He's thinking.
Yeah, I would also just say it might make sense for the bond council to weigh in at this point. She may have a suggestion as well.
I mean, what, generally speaking, my, my rule of drafting is A or B. And, well, let's see, A, B, or A and B.
Okay.
Try to cover it all. I do not like and/or. I just hate that expression because it's ambiguous.
Well, since we can fund capital projects fund from the general fund, we can just leave it the way it is. And if need be, we could transfer internally. And so it would still be coming out of one source.
So are you okay with it the way it's worded now, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yeah, as long as Director Watson's okay with what I just said.
Finance Director Watson, are you okay with what the Mayor Protem just asserted?
Yes, I am.
So I'm good on that one. What's your next question?
And I'm just, I'm going back to the things. So I think you addressed both of them in that, in that, the contribution and the repayment. So we've gotten to your original three points.
All right, thank you.
All right. And I saw a bit ago, Councilmember Dickinson had his hand up, but it's down for now. And so we'll take this moment while no one's hands are up to turn to public comment on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item this evening, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. The first comment is from a phone number ending in 8226. And you might be muted on your end.
Oh, thank you. This is Sherry Summer and I want to thank you for being proactive on implementing the transportation master plan and planning for ways to find funding for that. I wonder if one way to sort of clarify the process, or I think it might be useful to say, this is the process that we'll go through. We'll, you know, we'll apply for grants, we'll apply to the LRC. Well, first, we'll exhaust all sources of funding before we implement property taxes. I'm just wondering if that would, would help make people comfortable with the amount of money that might or might not be spent. And also I have a question. Isn't the amount, isn't the amount going to be based on how many underpasses or bike paths you choose to create within a given time? So I mean, theoretically, you might not have to increase property taxes at all. I mean, if you were within certain parameters. So it's a statement and a question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next commenter this evening is John Leary. And you might, oh, there we go.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment on a comment that was made. It's not directly related to the issue that this essentially, it was implied this is your last shot at this. And I think it's getting at what the council's role can be during an election. And this isn't your last shot at it. It's your last shot as a council. And the issue we're talking about usually comes down to that you can't use any public funds to promote this issue one way or other. As individuals, you can knock on doors and go around and do whatever you want. And so this, this isn't it for you. I think most, I think you really owe it to the public to let the public know how you feel about it beyond just passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to comment this evening? All right. Thank you for the feedback. And that takes us back over to the council discussion. And just to clarify on the question that was raised, what we're talking about is bonding for a fixed amount of money. And so we will program that money in the most cost-effective way possible. And in this intention document, we've listed a number of underpasses that are priorities that have been identified. And we would hope to improve those things in that order. And so there's a scenario where you could get very favorable pricing and we might be able to get very far through the list. There's a scenario where there's hyperinflation and $50 million doesn't buy you a sandwich. And so then we would not be able to get very far through the list at all. And so that's why we can't be more specific with how many of those improvements we'll do. And the reason we added in some additional transportation improvements is let's say you could get through three projects on the list, but not four. We might be able to make significant at-grade improvements at the other locations. And so we tried to build in some flexibility for future councils to still make improvements if they could get through three underpasses and then use any remaining funds to make at-grade improvement and other type improvement. So there was a lot of deliberation around all of that in previous meetings. So I'm sorry it wasn't clear tonight in the discussion. And that takes us back for council member discussions and comments. Councilmember Lookton.
Thank you. So I was looking at bullet number four on page, gosh, sorry, page 182. And getting back to Protem Maloney's comments about actually the ordinance, I was wondering in the letter of intent, if we couldn't mention other city funds or city reserves that could be added to the list, just, just so it's there and, and people know it's there.
Mayor Protem Lookton, this is City Manager Balsor. Just the second to last whereas in the resolution of intent, it says it is the desire of council to minimize the use of property taxes to repay the bonds and to maximize other sources of revenue such as sales and use tax revenue and LRC revenue. Council intends to use internal funds. So that's just, Kim and I had this exact conversation about, so does that preclude our ability to use other funds? And it does not if they're internal city funds. So that was our attempt there is to be clear that there's a number of funds that, that can be used, revenue sources for, and to minimize the use of property taxes. So I don't know, Kim, if you want to add anything.
No, that's, that's exactly right. I tried really hard to make sure that we weren't pigeonholing you into one source of revenue and tried to be very flexible in, and for sure, the ballot question allows you any, any available revenue of the city. And this resolution as well, I believe, we identified the, the capital projects fund because I believe Mr. Watson said that that was really where most of your funds flow through. But certainly you have talked about tonight that you can transfer other unencumbered funds to that fund and it can flow out of that fund. But, but I think, you know, you're really bound to the ballot question. You're bound to what the voters vote on. And if this is approved by the voters, you can use any available source of revenue of the city to pay these, to pay these bonds back. So that allows maximum flexibility in what you use.
Okay, I was, I was more focused on the staff report and I, I gave this as much on the, the actual draft resolution. And I was just wondering if they are properly synced up.
So I would just say, you know, the, the staff report is a summary of the resolution and the resolution is the formal document. So, yeah.
Okay. And then my, my last question, I, I would like to get some resolution to this, Mayor, is this issue about other projects that might be funded outside of the underpasses. This isn't, I think, being sold as an underpass tax. It's really transportation improvements that might include underpasses. uh transportation improvements that might include underpasses as a high priority. But I want to make sure that we're not precluding the use for other um transportation necessities. And to make sure that's clear in the resolution.
Thank you, council member Lipton. So I tried to summarize what I believe the discussion has been to date, which has been to try to complete these underpass improvements to the maximum extent possible. And while we recognize that it might not be feasible to do all six. And so we we identified that there could be funds remaining. Let's say you could do four, but not number five and six. So if there were additional funds remaining, we could make other pedestrian and bicycle improvements around town. And I don't believe we've had any more specificity than that. So I was trying to reflect what I believe is a summary of previous discussions uh from council members around that point. But if people would like to have a broader conversation or clarify that further, this would be a great time for that.
So mayor, that I think goes to probably section three of the actual draft resolution.
Yes, sir.
Maybe there could be, and I don't have, you know, I I haven't come up with wording yet, something that just says more says generally um various transportation improvement projects, but you know, all of them listening for 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 those that are underpasses, this would be the priority. So the priority list refers to the underpasses, but there could be a broader you know, list of, and we don't have to say the list, but just so people understand that there could be other transportation improvements.
I believe that's captured in section three, and I believe from previous conversations that is our intent to prioritize these underpasses first and foremost. And so I think it's captured there. And it says if council deems necessary, one or more of the following projects may not be completed or may be replaced by a different project. Um, so I I do think it covers all of the bases, but I do believe the discussion has been around getting these assets. So if you have a different language proposal um to bring forward, that would be fantastic.
Well, I'm I'd be curious to see if anybody else is interested in in the direction I'm trying to take it. If not, then, you know, why why bother? But I, you know, again, I I was hoping this just isn't an underpass tax. Hope it's just not an underpass priority list. It would be at least keeping the door open for other transportation improvements as deemed important by the future councils.
Council member lay, I'm not trying to jump you in order, but it looked like Mayor Protim Maloney may have a response or wanted to add in to something that council member Lipton just brought up. Mayor Protim Maloney?
So just for clarification, I I'm looking at the intention document mostly for how our intention is is making payment on the bonds. Um, when I go back and look at the ballot issue, the very beginning of the ballot issue, section one. Um, when it talks about the conditions, talks about underpasses, bypass, pedestrian walkways, trails, and other related improvements. So to me, that was that definition of, I think, what you're talking about, Councilor Lipton.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was looking at it in the ballot for really what we were asking people to, you know, approve this ballot issue. And those were the categories. So I don't know if that satisfies your intent or not, but that's just the way I was looking at it.
Yeah, no, I I like the way you were looking at it. I was just kind of, uh, it was just curious to me that it's in the ballot. Question, but then it's not carried over to the intent resolution. And I I would suggest there probably should be some consistency.
So I mean, I I am open to hearing more discussion on the topic, but I do think it's important to show the community that we're looking at addressing these underpasses that they've brought up to us time and time again. So I think making it to I I believe that's the discussion we've been having. I believe that is our intention is to fund the underpasses to the maximum extent feasible. Um, some of these other improvements that are smaller curb and intersection improvements, uh, bike lanes, crossings, we've been able to cash fund those because they're just not as expensive. And the big issue is that we can't cash fund these underpasses. We have to bond to pay for them. So I'm comfortable with the intent document because it clearly outlines the underpasses and the priority order that we're trying to accomplish them in. But it recognizes that fifty million dollars is the maximum that we're willing to ask the voters for because we don't want to encumber them to have to make payments back on anything greater than that. And we might not be able to do all of the underpasses. So we may have to take measures to improve the crossings in other ways if we can't get through the entire list. So I prefer to leave the underpass list listed in the intent document. And to make it clear, we're trying to fund these underpasses. But I recognize the need to be able to make those other types of improvements that are described in the ballot measure. So I would rather not change it. Um, other council members have a preference on this? Council member Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I think if the if the intent is flexibility, I think we've captured that. I mean, in my opinion. Right? If the intent is we don't want to fund underpasses, then yeah, I don't think we've captured that because I think it is our intention to fund underpasses first and foremost. So I'm very comfortable with the combination of the flexible language in the very in the legally binding uh ballot language uh with the non-binding resolution that that reflects our intent. But also still reflects um flexibility, uh which is also our intent. That if we couldn't, if, you know, we have money, but we don't have enough to fund another underpass, uh that we would want to look at some of these other improvements. So I'm very comfortable with the way this is all laid up.
Other council members want to weigh in on this point? Not seeing any, it might just take a minute for people to noodle on alternate language if there is an alternate proposal. And so we'll go back to the queue and other topics while people are thinking of that over. Council member lay. Back to your comments. Which I think we're on a different topic.
Oh, yeah, I I was just um uh responding uh for a second to to Mr. Larry's comment, um because I think I was the one who made uh the one that he was commenting on. Um, it it may actually be worth worth it to for the city attorney just to describe maybe in more detail the issue of what council's role is presuming we get agreement on this uh resolution and then that we agree to send the ballot measure to the voters. Because I I absolutely agree with Mr. Larry that we as individual council members, we certainly don't have any fewer rights than citizens to advocate in favor of this proposal. I certainly am in favor of what we're what we're doing. But but I think it's if she could maybe just put it in a nutshell as to what we can you know, what we what we are not, maybe it's more important to say what we're not able to do.
Thank you, council member lay. So city attorney Kelly, could you tell us a little bit about the fair campaign practices?
Sure. Um, and in a nutshell, after you set the ballot title and refer this uh measure to the voters, so after you adopt the ordinance, if you do that this evening, then you may not expend any public funds to urge voters to vote one way or the other on the measure. Um, you certainly do retain your rights as an individual to talk to folks and go door to door as Mr. Leary described. Um, but this is a significant event referring the matter to the voters, and everybody should be mindful of that because it does change what you all can do as a council moving forward. Um, and Kim, if you have anything to add to that, I welcome your comments as well.
No, I I think that was um essentially really what it is. You you just can't spend public money for advocacy. But you do have first amendment rights. You can go out and campaign on your own doing your own thing. You're you're not paid employees of the city. So the time that you spend out doing those things is not um is not city money paying you to go out and do those things.
And mayor, I would just add that typically uh so again, we need to wait and see what the result is tonight. And then typically, within the next day or two. Um, and in anticipation of also a a council election coming up in in uh November, we send a memo to all of staff and city council and boards and commissions related to what they can and can't do as it relates to the Fair Campaign Practices Act. So that would be coming uh should the ordinance be approved this evening.
Thank you, city manager. So council member way, did you have other comments?
No.
Thank you, council member light for bringing that to our attention. Council member Fahy?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to kind of expand on that topic. So if we are in a public facility doing volunteer work or holding our our ward meetings, or are we allowed to discuss it with residents or not?
City manager Ballser? Or city attorney Kelly, whoever would like to take that on. But just to add in while there, deciding who will answer your question, council member Fahy, the city, if should we move forward with this this evening, the city staff would work on a factual statement to put on our website and have available at city hall for people that, you know, has pros and cons. And um that it tries to be very factual, to the point and fair on all fronts. Um, and so there would be this factual statement that we we could give out. So like if you were hosting a ward meeting and people said, is anything on the ballot? You wouldn't have to run out of the room. You could say, here's the factual statement of what's on the ballot this fall and leave it at that. Um, so if it was a ward meeting that's being staffed by staff and things like that, what I would recommend you do is to just stick to the facts. But if you were having like a uh, you know, friends over to your home or going to, you know, you could say whatever is on your mind.
Okay, thank you.
City attorney Kelly or city manager Ballser, would you like to add to that or correct me?
Mayor, this is um city attorney Kelly. No, I think that's a very good description. You can answer questions. And as city manager Ballsar noted, we will be sending out information on the Fair Campaign Practices Act and would be happy to follow up with any questions. I don't I don't necessarily want the council to get bogged down right now in the middle of this discussion. It's not on the agenda. Um, and though it is related, I think that we run the risk of um, you know, talking our way into a topic that's not on the agenda if we get too deep into this. Uh, but we will get the information out to you and happy to answer any questions that you have after you've had a chance to digest that.
All right. Well, thank you for all of that. That's um fantastic. And so I believe we have resolved the questions to the extent that we can that people have raised. Uh, we don't have a motion on the table as of yet. And if anyone would like to put a motion on the table, I'd just like to remind everyone that there was consensus to change to make one amendment at this point, which is in section three to move what was number five to number two, and then just to move the rest of the list down. So if there is a motion that comes forward, if someone could include that one amendment that there has been consensus on. So could I please get a motion to frame the discussion? Councilman, uh mayor Protem Maloney?
No one was raising their hand, so I'm jumping in. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number fifty-three, series twenty twenty-one uh with one amendment in the priority section three by moving item which is now number five up to number two. And all the ones below that will be uh bounced down one priority number.
Thank you.
Captain number lay, was that a second? I'm sorry, I just didn't hear. Yes. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion or further clarification needed on what we would be voting on? All right. Thank you. Seeing that, could we please have a roll call on the motion?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Maloney?
Yes.
Council member lay?
Yes.
Council member Brown?
Yes.
Council member Fahy?
Yes.
Council member Lipton?
Yes.
Council member Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And so I know we're at two hours and we are trying to take a break every two hours to let people stretch. But I do think in the interest of the original discussion around having these two items together that we should go on to the next item and we'll take a break right at the end of it before the next agenda item. So that will bring us to our next item tonight, which is ordinance number eighteen ten series twenty twenty-one, an ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the city at the November second, twenty twenty-one regular municipal election, a ballot issue concerning increases in city debt and property taxes for the purpose of constructing transportation improvements and authorizing other actions regarding the conduct of such election. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in Daily Camera on seven eighteen twenty twenty-one. I'll open the public hearing again and just ask Kim for just a very brief, uh Ms. Crawford, for just a very brief summary of what we're putting forward.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so again, what we're putting forward tonight is a resol, I'm sorry, an ordinance that um the council takes official action to place this question on the ballot. Um, it sets forth a couple of items in the whereas clauses about um who the designated election official is that you're going to coordinate with the county as to the election details. It ratifies certain actions that have previously been taken. And it sets forth the ballot question as um as has been discussed. Um, and again, at the at the risk of being repetitive, I'm not going to reread the ballot question or go through what the ballot is, um, the actual question says. But that is essentially um what this what this ordinance does, and it starts the process um with the moving down the road on on calling this election.
Thank you very much. And so that this is an ordinance as mentioned before, and so there'll be two rounds of public comment on this this evening. If any members of the public care to comment on this item, please raise your hand at this time. Thank you very much. And so that takes us back to council questions and comments on the ordinance now in referring to ballot measures of the voters. Council member Fahy?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Do I need to re uh move?
Please do. Um, if we could just, if if you could just please, yeah, make a motion so that we have a current motion on the table and it's clear what we're all talking about.
Okay, then I move to adopt uh ordinance number eighteen ten, series twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council member Brown? Seconds. Thank you. And any discussion on the motion or questions? Council member Lipton? Council member Lipton, you're muted.
All right. I just want to point out one more time uh and for the record on page one sixty-nine, the bottom of one sixty-nine uh subsection one states such debt and taxes shall be used for the purpose of financing the acquisition and construction of transportation improvements, including, but not limited to underpasses, bike paths, pedestrian walkways, trails and related improvements. And I hope this council and future councils will um take that statement seriously. And notwithstanding the priorities that you've established for underpasses that recognize these funds can be used for other transportation improvements that makes sense. And I hope you'll just remember that. Personally, um, you know, I I I still have some concerns about this, but I'm uh, I know everybody's been kind of giving and taking, and this is much better than it was, I think, four or five months ago when we started the conversation. So although I still have concerns, I will support moving this forward to a vote of the citizens so they can decide. So my my vote tonight is for that purpose. Um, but like I said, uh, remember subsection one as you're working through this over the next several years. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Lipton. And the other comments on the motion from members? All right, that takes us back over to our second round and final round of public comments on this ordinance tonight, which would refer a measure to the voters for consideration. Any members of the public care to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, thank you, everyone. Um, it takes us back to council discussion and comments. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Um, you know, I share a number of perspectives that councillor Lipton has put out there. You know, there's still a lot of uncertainty. Um, for some of them, we have ten percent designs. We don't know what the interest rate is going to be. There there's still a lot of pieces up in the air. Um, and we have a lot of work to do. And so, you know, I look forward to working with the intent and and following the ballot issue. Um, so but we still have a lot of work to do and and but I think this is from where we started to where we are today, I'm very pleased and I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. And I'll just um add my thanks once again to the staff, to the boards and commission members, to the community members who have let us know about the importance of these connections over time and to my colleagues on council for working to try to seek a path forward. Um, you know, this is complicated. Um, I recognize that, and the discussion tonight has shown that. But I think trying to come up with a solution rather than just telling people no is an important thing. And then to put it in the hands of the community to determine if the solution is appropriate to try to address the need. And then to put it in the hands of the community to determine if the solution is appropriate to try to address the needs. So I look forward to the feedback from the voters in any case. And I look forward to working with council members to continue to improve the community on into the future. Any other comments from members on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask for a roll call on the motion.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion passes, and so we will take a five-minute break between this item and the next agenda item. It's 8:12 now, so we'll get started again at 8:17. It is 8:17, so when I see the corner of the books on the screen, we'll get started again. All right, thank you, everybody. So just a reminder for everybody at home watching, this is the July 27, 2021 Louisville City Council meeting. We are going to try to get through as much material as we can this evening, but we will be adjourning the meeting right around 10:00 p.m. So any things we don't get to at the end, we'll continue to a future meeting. And where we are now in our agenda is Agenda Item D, and we'll get started now on that. We are on Ordinance Number 1812 Series 2021, An Ordinance Reinstiting Provisions of the Louisville Municipal Code Regarding Penalties for Non-Payment of Water Charges. This is our second reading and public hearing. It was advertised in the Daily Camera on July 18, 2021. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask council members if they have any disclosures this evening. Seeing none, that will take us over to our staff presentation from Deputy City Manager Megan Davis on this topic. Good evening, Megan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So during the COVID-19 pandemic, City Council adopted Emergency Ordinance Number 1792 Series 2020, which suspended water disconnections and other penalties for non-payment to the city's utility customers. The purpose of the emergency ordinance was to provide relief to city water customers who are experiencing financial impacts as a result of COVID-19. At the June 15 City Council meeting, council directed staff to bring back an ordinance to reinstate the city's ordinances related to penalties and disconnections for non-payment of utility bills. Council also requested that the city continue to support the Utility Bill Assistance Program and to provide outreach to any customers with unpaid bills regarding the reinstatement of the city's standard non-payment penalties. So attached for your consideration is Ordinance 1812 Series 2021, which reinstates the city's penalties for non-payment of water bills. The ordinance states that these penalties will go back into effect on September 30, 2021. The city would begin applying standard collection procedures, including interest penalties, disconnections during the month of October for past due accounts. It also authorizes and encourages the city staff to enter into payment plans with water customers who have accumulated past due balances during the COVID-19 pandemic. This process will allow for two months, the August and September billing cycles, of notification before the late fees will be imposed and before any water disconnections would occur. So any customers who may be facing penalties and disconnections would be directed to the city's finance team, who will provide some options for them to address any issues. This would include a repayment plan potentially or direct them to the city's Utility Bill Assistance Program, which is administered through Sister Carmen Community Center. We've included in the packet a complete list of the communication strategies and outreach that we'll take to inform customers of this return back to our pre-COVID policies. And the staff recommendation is that City Council approve Ordinance Number 1812 Series 2021. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Davis. And so that, as this is an ordinance, there'll be two rounds of public comment. And that's, will take us to our first round of public comment on this agenda item. Would any members of the public care to comment on this agenda item this evening? Seeing none, that takes us back over for council questions and comments. Any council members have questions or comments on this agenda item tonight? Councilmember Lay?
You know, the only, I've always had a special interest in the fund that we set up years ago. And I do appreciate the summary that the Deputy City Manager mentioned. I wonder if it might be worthwhile to at least, I'm just looking through this, the language of the ordinance itself would not, doesn't appear to deal with or require any specific step by the finance office to refer people to alternatives. I think that's the intention. And, you know, while I think it's important to have this back in the books, I, I think I would also like, and I don't have language, I could noodle some. But it'd be nice to have some language that indicated that we, at the very least, intend that all avenues, you know, all of the kinds of relief that might be available to people who do have challenges in paying their utility bills are, you know, are presented or at least referred, that the people are referred to by the, by the finance office. I think that would be consistent with, I think, what I am interested in accomplishing in this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Did you have a specific place that you wanted to insert new language? Like in a whereas clause, maybe?
Yes. Let me, let me, what I can do is, I mean, if people are going to go ahead and, I mean, it would be nice, I guess, to find out whether there's any support for that. But I, yeah, at least in the whereas, I think that may be enough. I mean, I know that, that the, you know, the kinds of tools that are available to finance or to help people change, and I get that. I think probably in the whereas it adequately expresses our intent. And my bet is that probably our finance office does this anyway. It's just a matter of sort of underscoring that. So I can, yeah, I can noodle a quick whereas while we're even talking here.
Sounds great. Thanks. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you. I just have to hit the right button. You know, I appreciate Councilor Lay's intent with this. We need to, whatever we say needs to be very generic because the utility assistance program is something we fund every year. So we want to be careful not to put something in the ordinance that then we would have to adjust based upon how we're doing assistance. So if it's something about doing notification of potential assistance programs or something, something very generic, I would be fine with that. So with regard to other comments, I'm in support of this ordinance as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wasn't, I think, back on June 15 was not in support of moving this forward. So it's not, probably a surprise to you that I'm not super excited about it today. You know, I think the two, so the two things I'd like to bring up are, yeah, in the summary at the very beginning, we adopted an emergency ordinance, which suspended the disconnections because of what was going on. And what I'm, I guess, confused about is if we still are in a state of emergency, what's the rush? When we're no longer in a state of emergency, when that declaration is over, this reverts back to what it was previously. Is that correct? And that'd be my first question is, without this action tonight, won't, won't this go back naturally when we end the emergency declaration?
Deputy City Manager Davis?
Yes, that's, that's correct. The options that we, you know, brought forward during the previous discussion are that, you know, you could keep this in place, at which point it would revert back at that time or put forward a separate ordinance to modify the policy at this time.
Okay, so, and staff, I appreciate that you did this. Obviously, council asked you to do this, so my comments are my own. And so then, you know, I feel like there isn't a hurry. And to the, to the final whereas, you know, while the city and its staff will continue to work on COVID-19 recovery efforts, and thus the mayor's declaration will remain in effect, the city council finds the economic health and continued financial vitality of its water system requires the reinstatement of all provisions of the code that were temporarily suspended in, by Ordinance Number 1792. I just don't, I don't buy that. We have $27 million in our water utility fund. I don't believe that we're, that the financial vitality of our water system requires that we do this before the emergency declaration has ended. So I will not be supporting this tonight. But I don't think it is because we should never require people to pay and that you can just always not pay and that there's no consequences ever. I don't think that's how you run a city. And so I am not pushing for this to be permanent. I just think it should go with the declaration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. And I might ask a question to just follow on to that, that could have some more discussion around it. And it's just around the, some of the data we were presented with around non-payment and that, you know, people are starting to accrue more and more months of non-payment. And we want to ensure they get onto these programs that we funded. So I wonder if someone on staff can tell us a little bit about the state of those things? Like, are there people that are behind on their bills, that are not accessing payment plans or are not seeking assistance from Sister Carmen? Or do we feel like we're all caught up at this point and that we've directed people to those resources? Just sort of, could you describe the state of the, of the people's payment and non-payment of their water bills?
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm trying to, I just want to bring up this window and I was trying to unmute while doing that. So, so, yeah, I can, I can share some of the data that we provided, you know, previously for the discussion. Let's see, I'm trying to pull it up because I don't have it right in front of me. We, and I'll let, I'll let Director Watson chime in as well. But, you know, what we are finding is that more of our utility bill customers are in arrears for a longer duration of time. And, you know, I think having the penalties, you know, may, may sort of drive people to make that call or to reach out for assistance. And if they are unable to pay and are unable to even work with a payment plan, then we can get them connected with resources more quickly before they get so far, you know, in arrears that they may not really, you know, ever be able to catch up. So I think that's one of the reasons for starting to really encourage people to work with us to help address it through a payment plan or also to help get them connected to Sister Carmen Community Center for the utility bill assistance and perhaps other assistance. Kevin, I don't know if you have any other comments you'd like to add?
I think that covers it pretty well. I think that's it. Right now, there's absolutely, we make no contact with delinquent payers at all. So if somebody doesn't pay their water bill and doesn't contact us, we do not do any outreach. We don't talk about payment plans or Sister Carmen or water leak credits or senior rebates or any of that stuff. So, but this will allow us to do is actually start managing these accounts. And as Megan said, the aging of the accounts receivable is getting longer. The number of accounts isn't that much. Let's see, the last time I ran this was July 1, we had approximately 307 delinquent accounts. That's just 30 days and over. But the 90 days and over is up to 130 accounts. That's a little bit high for us because normally what we do is we That's a little bit high for us because normally what we do is we contact these people. We, you know, we go out and do red tags. Public Works helps us with shut offs. We refer them to payment plans and this types of things. If we continue on, we won't contact these people at all because there's really no consequence of non-payment. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. It, it does. And I just wonder if there's some threading of the needle that can happen to get everybody's. I feel like everyone's coming at this from a very good place. And so I'm wondering if there's some way to structure this that addresses everyone's thoughts and concerns. Councilmember Fagie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm really on the fence on this item. I'm tending toward Councilwoman Dickinson's assessment that until the state of emergency is removed, people are going to be in, in a state of emergency. And the, with the new variants coming out and, and now the, the White House and the CDC are both talking about going back to mask mandates and, and various things for unvaccinated people or requiring vaccinations. It, it just doesn't appear to me that this is gone yet or in any kind of safe area. And so I would, I would tend to go with the, the position that we should wait until our declaration of emergency is over.
Thank you, Councilmember Fagie. Councilmember Lay?
I, I was just gonna propose some language, but I, I don't know the word finished with this particular part of the discussion.
Okay, so I'll put a pin in that and come back for your language on the whereas that you might want to add. It, it, it does seem like if we just postpone and we don't start to contact people to get them on payment plans and get them assistance, that that's a problem. And I also understand the concern of, I, I understand why you would want to postpone. So I think we need to come up with a solution in any case. So I don't know if folks have other comments or feedback around that. Mayor Protem Maloney?
You know, my thoughts around this is, and it always has been actually, is that there is an assistance program. And the finest department, you know, if we reinstate this, they do make contact and try to help people with payment plans or, or other things. So I'm not, I'm not understanding quite what we're talking about because people can go to Sister Carmen and apply for help if they indeed really need help. And, you know, it's important for us. And we, we've increased that last year. We've increased it this year for providing that assistance. It seems to me if someone can show that they really need help, there's a process through Sister Carmen to get help. And so it seems like, to me, that's the way to go. You know, based on some of the comments I've heard tonight about, you know, people are just, since there's no, there's no interest or no penalties, you can just let that belt. So, you know, I, I, I think that we, we all want to make sure that people are struggling, get the help they need. And that's why, you know, previous councils and previous staff have worked with the county and Sister Carmen and things like that to make sure we have assistance programs. And it's something I think is really important, and I'd like to rely upon those kind of tools to help people.
Thanks, Mayor Protem Maloney. And I just want to clarify for the viewing public that the program at District Carmen is funded by the city and that they administer it on our behalf. And so next is Councilmember Dickinson. Next is Councilmember Lipton.
Thanks. You know, I'm not sure we want to tie this issue specifically to the emergency declaration. I, I think there are other reasons that we still have the emergency declaration. And, you know, if I recall correctly, it's about our ability to gain support from the federal government, state government for, you know, funds that might be related to COVID. But it really doesn't necessarily tie directly back to this issue. And correct me if I'm wrong on that assumption. So I'm not sure that's the right trigger point to decide when we are going to proactively contact our delinquent water customers and then work with them to get them the kind of help they need. Because the worst thing we can do is just keep letting them roll over the amounts owed if our intention is to eventually collect it. But, so, anyway, I, I'm not sure the emergency declaration is the right trigger point to, you know, get into that mode. And I was also wondering, is the state and county, are they still under emergency declaration? Or is this just at our municipal level?
I believe they're still under emergency orders as well, but we'll turn to Deputy Manager Davis to confirm.
That's correct. They are, yes.
State and the county.
State and the county. The state has made some modifications and to theirs. And I, I think they're still under the public health order. Kathleen, I believe that's correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. But I still believe they're under the state emergency public health declaration. And the county is still under an emergency declaration.
Okay. I don't want to belabor it, but again, I don't think that's the right, necessarily the right trigger for us to not enforce our policies. Thanks.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna, you know, I, I really appreciate what Councilmember Dickinson and Councilmember Fagie said. The reason I'm gonna go ahead and support this resolution is not because I want people's water shut off. Quite the contrary, right? I'm, I'm, I think that, you know, continuing to create a situation where people might fall farther and farther behind on their bills is, is actually doing everyone a disservice. And that this change, adopting this ordinance tonight will allow our staff to do more proactive outreach, allow us to connect more people with services that they need and, and, and help, help folks ultimately resolve their, their utility bills as opposed to let the debt grow. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it for those reasons.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I want to make sure that all my colleagues know that I have no doubt in any of your intentions. And I know that you're all good people and, and, and I, I know that you don't want people's water turned off. So there's no, I want, I want to make sure that that's, that's really clear and I have to say that out loud. I think the, you know, as many of you know, I, I run a residential property management company, and we had to go through the no late fees and no evictions. And we instated that before it was law, and then it became law. Now it's, you know, no longer law in a lot of ways. And we've reinstated late fees for the exact reason that you're all talking about, which is honestly to incentivize payment so that they don't get so far behind. And we have the freedom, because it's our company, to charge a late fee, get them to pay, and then actually drop the late fee and like, oh, nice big surprise. But what we aren't doing is evictions, right? And so I think to the mayor's point, I appreciate you trying, Mayor, to find some sort of path through is, it's absolutely absurd that we're not able, or, or what I'm hearing, you know, we're, we're, we aren't connecting with these people that are behind, and we're not giving them the resources, and we're not giving them sort of the warnings. We should definitely be communicating with them that this is a problem, that it hasn't been forgiven. There may be no additional fees on top of what you owe, but you do owe this, and this goes with you when you move, like this is yours. And you must pay this at some point, and we don't want you to get behind. But to add a $50 fee, it doesn't make it easier to pay. It makes it more necessary to pay, and I get that that is a good strategy. And to turn their water off makes it absolutely desperate, and they had to prioritize it, and then they pay. But to, you know, Councilmember Lipton's point, you know, we don't want to end the declaration because we're still receiving funds and might receive new funds and other things because we're in a state of crisis. But, but then we're gonna turn people's water off in this state of crisis while we are receiving funds from the federal government to, I don't know, help people in crisis, right? So I, I, I knew I was gonna get there, and I want to make sure, Councilmember Lipton, you know that, I know that you have a heart of gold, so I, I don't mean to come after you at all around that. But that just got to me of this feeling like, we shouldn't be receiving money and then turning people's water off when they can't afford to pay their bill. So I think there's a middle ground where we can say, hey, let's start the communication. Let's maybe even do some fines, but let's not go so far as to turn someone's water off. It's a health and safety issue, in my opinion. And I'd just like to find some middle ground. But, but again, I'm okay with however this goes tonight, and I respect all of you a lot with however you vote. I think it's a sensitive issue, so I'm being sensitive right now on making sure you don't, I'm not painting any picture about your vote tonight. I know you're all doing, doing a great job, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. And just so you start thinking about, like, if you are going to propose a middle ground, you could give a, a motion in the form of direction to staff on how to move forward. So if you're planning on doing that, you might start thinking about the language around that. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I have a question and then a suggestion. The question is, do we have in any other part of our city ordinances any statement to the effect that shutting off residential consumers' water is a last resort?
Councilmember Lay, I think we'll just need to pause a moment unless someone has the answer ready at the helm to give staff a moment on that one, unless a staff member would like to chime in.
Yeah, I, I do not have the answer to that. I don't know, Kevin, if you're, or Kathleen, if you're aware of anything else that might not be, that I might be aware of.
Right. This is Kathleen Kelly, City Attorney. Certain that we don't couch it in terms of last resort in the municipal code. You know, the purpose of the municipal code is to set forth the regulations that surround our water system. And the, with regard to the payment of water bills, water charges are a lien on the property served from the time the charge is incurred until it is paid. And, you know, really, the ordinances are drafted to support that notion because it is what ultimately keeps your water fund healthy financially. So there's procedure that is outlined in the municipal code that, you know, if payment's not made, ultimately could result in water service being disconnected. And that is sort of the final step, I guess. Well, not final, because then there's reinstatement charges and a procedure to go through to get the water turned back on. So I guess if you read through it, you, you could come to the conclusion that turning off the water is sort of the final step. But there is a process that leads up to that. But we don't call it a last resort in the code.
And I understand that. I, I think, you know, in some of this, we may want to table, I mean, we can only do so much with this ordinance that's before us. I, I don't know how big of a problem this is. I think it's something, from my standpoint, we may want to consider down the road as, you know, is there something about that process that we may want to tweak? Do we want to at least be a little bit, you know, gather some more information about it? I guess, I, I was just interested in whether it is something like that. The, the clause that I noodled, I can read it and I can text it or email it to somebody. But this is kind of what I was thinking. But one, maybe one comment before I say that, which is a comment on the kind of big picture of all this. I think we obviously have obligations to our, our citizens to make sure that the utility is paying for itself. And that's, we set rates, we manage the fund and all of that with that in mind. And I, I think we, the reason that I support this, and, and certainly supported it last time, will support it tonight, is that for the vast majority of us in the city, we need to, to move on at some point and move back to where we were before in terms of getting people to get current on their water bills. We also, I think, have a duty to our residents to be compassionate and empathetic and understanding and helpful where that is a problem. And that doesn't necessarily mean creating a whole infrastructure. We know that. We have Sister Carmen administering the, the fund that has been discussed tonight because they're just good at it. We provide the money. They're really good at administering, and, and that's what they do. But that, that safety net is critical. And it seems to, to me that although we're not providing all of those resources, helping to bridge those residents who are having trouble to resources that might help them and even to take steps within our, our city process to work with those individuals. It's really important. So I, I think it's, but I, I do think it's really important to, as a general matter, we need to get back where we were before, and we need to still maintain and maybe strengthen the commitment to do, to give those people some relief to the extent that it's appropriate. And it's always, I think there's gonna be judgment calls here, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds on that. So what I was gonna suggest was adding a whereas clause. Whereas the city council is mindful that some residents have had, have, or may have in the future financial challenges in paying their utility bills. And expect, excuse me, council expects city staff to work with those residents to establish payment plans as appropriate and notify them of community and government resources that may be able to assist them in meeting their obligations.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. And I appreciate you taking the time to dress that up so we can add that whereas clause. Does anyone need Councilmember Lay to repeat it, or was it clear to everyone? Looks like it was clear to everyone, and so I just want to add something. So I pulled up the municipal code, and I know the finance director already told us this and this, and the deputy city manager, but just looking at it in print helped me a little bit. So, you know, people really won't have their water shut off in any circumstance for 75 days. And that's after they've been contacted and, you know, talked about how, how to make it approved. So there's no circumstance where someone would just, you know, wake up one morning and have their water turned off without knowing it was coming and the ability to correct it and the ability to access these resources. And there's another section of our code, 13 dash 12 dash 125, the finance director may waive penalties. So perhaps we could find a path forward for consensus where we could all approve the ordinance but give direction to staff that if there are extenuating COVID circumstances that are appropriate and follow, you know, a, a staff outlined procedure that the finance director could waive those penalties, sort of like what Councilmember Dickinson was describing with his business, that, you know, you really want to get people up to date. You want to get them access to the resources. And then if we can waive penalties so that penalties accruing don't make the problem worse and compound the issue. It does look like we have that discretion, and we could give that direction to staff in this situation. So putting it out there as a potential path forward. Councilmember Fagie?
Yes, I agree with everything you just said and with the whereas from Councilor Lay. I would add that perhaps we could discuss for people who are qualified, for example, through the Sister Carmen Center, that we could waive their late fees if they are, you know, really in some kind of hardship and cannot even make payments. That we could waive any late fees or, and not assert any penalties at all.
Please, Councilmember Fagie. Councilmember Dickinson? Is Councilmember Fahy? Councilmember Dickinson?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number eighteen twelve, series twenty twenty-one, with Councilmember Lay's additional whereas, and with your direction to staff to, well, the, the direction you gave, I don't even repeat it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Lay.
I was just going to ask for a friendly amendment based on what I just heard, which would only be to add a little bit of language to what I just said, add in a reference to waiving late fees, penalties, and establishing payment plans as appropriate. Just, there, there are other tools that are there, and we might as well mention those as well.
Is the motioner accept the friendly amendment?
Yes, I understand feels like they have that language wrapped up. I'm, I'm fine with that. The thought there.
Let me just find out if the secondor does, and then we'll ask staff if it's actually clear enough what we've said. Is the secondor okay with the friendly amendment? And then we'll turn over to Deputy Mana, Deputy City Manager Megan Davis and our Finance Director Kevin Watson to hear if what we've said is actually clear enough to be able to implement it.
Yes, I, I, I hear both the additional whereas to be added. I think it may be helpful to have Councilmember Lay just provide that test in writing. I, I did try to scribble it down, but if I missed some of it. And then also with the direction to staff, Director Watson, is the direction to staff clear to you as well?
Yeah, just one quick question. I, I, and this is maybe, maybe for Kathleen. Do, does the ordinance or the code give me the authorization to waive interest? And reconnection fees and those types of things, or just penalties?
That's an answered question that I don't, that's a question that I don't have an answer to right now. Kevin, we can certainly look into that. Yeah, I'm sorry, it wasn't part of the discussion before.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to surprise you. I don't know that question either, so.
Well, I'm, I'm still satisfied with, with Director Watson having the ability to do what he can do according to our rules and regulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. And thank, thank, I would like to thank everybody for the good work trying to work through the issues and listening to each other to improve outcomes for our community. I think that was awesome. And, and so that takes us to our second round of public comment on this agenda item this evening. Are there any members in the public that would care to comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to the council discussion. Any other council questions? Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I was just gonna, again, responding to what you all were just saying, and, and the Finance Director. Let me, let me read what I'm going to momentarily send to. I'll send this to the council too, but I'll send this to staff as well. Whereas, the council is mindful that some residents have had, have, or may have in the future financial challenges in paying their utility bills. The city council states that it expects. The city council expects city staff to work with those residents to consider waiving late fees and penalties, establishing payment plans as appropriate, and notifying them of community and government resources that may be able to assist them in meeting their obligations.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Is that, the motioner's giving me a thumbs up. The secondor looks happy as well. All right, is there any other discussion on the motion that's on the table? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the city clerk for a roll call vote on this motion. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Portman Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next agenda item tonight, which is ordinance number eighteen eleven, series twenty twenty-one, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan, Redtail Ridge Master Plan. This is our second reading and public hearing, as advertised in the Daily Camera on seven eighteen twenty twenty-one. Open the public hearing and ask council members if they have any disclosures for the record. Seeing none, I'll just add that we have two addendums to the packet that was posted to include in the record. So we've received a number of public comments by email, and you'll find them attached below our council packet online as Attachment One and Attachment Two. And as I stated before, we're going to work toward as much as we can take in this evening, but we do plan to end the meeting at about ten o'clock, so I don't believe we'll be able to get through everything tonight. And we will continue the meeting at that point to a future meeting. And so we'll get as far as we can. And in the interim, if people continue to send public comments and the hearing is still open, those can be entered into the record for the next hearing date. With that, I'll turn it over to our Planning Director, Rob Sacar.
Good evening, Mayor Stolzmann, members of the city council. I will be making the staff presentation for the side of this evening. So it is the Redtail Ridge General Development Plan request. So this is a public hearing, and so we have certified all the public notice requirements have been met. Excuse me there, let me get used to my mouse here. So I just want to summarize the proposal on a high level, and then I'll get into the detail on some of the elements and then the staff analysis. But there are some things that have changed. So as you know, this was reviewed, a version of this was reviewed by city council about a year ago, and that was tabled. And council asked the developer to go back to the drawing board. At that time last year, the property was owned by Phillips sixty-six, and since that time, ownership has changed. So the applicant last year was Brubaco Capital Partners, but they didn't own the property. They do own the property now. They have gone back to the drawing board based on feedback they received during last year's review. And they are proposing now a mix of industrial office and commercial development. So this would be officially an amendment to the ConocoPhillips campus plan, but it's really a new concept for the property. So the, what's before you again is the general development plan. So this really just lays out uses, transportation network, character, and those types of things. The, the other thing that's changed is last year's application included a comprehensive plan amendment request. So this application no longer includes the comprehensive plan amendment request. As you may recall, there were requests to increase the policies on overall density or floor area allowed within the development, and then change some of the uses to include residential and some others. So that's been removed, so it's really, the intent is to comply with current comprehensive plan policy. So as you all know, it's about a three hundred and ninety acre property on the south side of the city. It borders portions of Broomfield and Superior and unincorporated county. In addition to, of course, you know, city property, including the Monarch Campus, the Avista Hospital Campus, as well as some open spaces that are jointly owned with the county. And as you all know, it used to be the home of Storage Tech Corporation, but the, that campus was demolished in anticipation of the ConocoPhillips campus, which didn't come to fruition. So just a, a quick note on the current general development plan that is, is being amended officially with this request. That plan did, you know, it was just a one-page plan. It had some general uses and intent for circulation, but it was accompanied by a preliminary planned unit development. So there's a lot of the detail was in that planned unit development. This general development plan has quite a bit more detail, because it's not accompanied by a preliminary planned unit development. Within our ordinance, as you know, this is zoned PCZD or Planned Community Zone District, so this requires a general development plan for development. These checkmarks here that you see, this is what is, this is by our ordinance, this is what this plan is supposed to accomplish. So it's really about the land uses and the character of development, really what the intent is for open space, park facilities. All of that happens at final plat officially, but this is supposed to lay out the intent of that. And then the, the type and character of the streets, it's all supposed, supposed to lay out any dwelling units, the number of dwelling units, but that's not included in this proposal. There is a, an agreement, a development agreement, that would be amended with this proposal as well, so that's included in the packet. And I want to note that the GDP and the PCZD zoning agreement are really the regulatory documents. So you'll see conceptual plans, there's, there's, you know, assumptions for the traffic study, fiscal analysis. All of that is based on, you know, what the, the applicant is proposing as a conceptual plan and what they think is market-supported, but it's not regulatory. It's really just what's in the GDP and the zoning agreement. So within the GDP document, you're really, the first page lays out a whole series of uses that's really taken from our code, and it's intended to provide three, there's several parcels within the general development plan, but there's really three different districts or character areas. There's an office district, an industrial, research and development district, and then and then really, and something that's supposed to encompass retail, office, or industrial and research and development. So, you know, the parcel D and C that you see in the general development plan, it's really meant to have a lot more flexibility in uses. A and E is really intended to be primarily an office district, and then parcel B is really intended to be an industrial flex type of development. So it's a mix of uses. The open space and public land dedication proposal is also in here, so that's all of the solid green and then the red here. So anything that's solid green that's being proposed would be a, a, a public land dedication that would be forenalized through the final plat. And the dark green is intended as open space dedication. The light green is intended as a park dedication, so that could be program space. There is a public safety facility dedication proposed, so that could be for a fire station and potentially a police substation as well. The blue areas are dedicated trails. So our ordinance on dedication does say you can't count areas that are encumbered by easements. So anywhere you see the yellow, they're subtracting out the areas encumbered by easements. So of this three hundred and eighty-nine acre property, three hundred and nine acres are subject to our public land dedication requirement. There was an eighty acre portion that was exempted through the annexation agreement. So it's really just three hundred and nine acres that are subject to the minimum requirement through, through our plating process. So that total required dedication is thirty-seven acres. They're proposing fifty-nine acres total within the boundaries of the development. Just as comparison, our current GDP, the ConocoPhillips campus GDP, also included fifty-nine acres. There were thirty-nine within the boundaries of the development, and then there was a commitment to dedicate an additional twenty acres north of the development on the properties around Paradise Lane. So those are those properties up here, north of the development. Part of the open space dedication is parcel F, so there is part of the Northwest Parkway intergovernmental agreements. There is a requirement for a buffer in this area between the Paradise Lane residential properties, which are in the unincorporated camp, county. And then this development, there is a requirement for a buffer. The IGA doesn't specify the size or the depth of the buffer, but this is intended to meet that buffer requirement within the IGA. A couple of other items on open space dedications. There is a thirty-six acre conservation easement outside of Louisville boundaries, but they are committing to overlay that with the conservation easement with the city and county of Broomfield, so that's this area on the very southern tip. So this is Northwest Parkway, this is US thirty-six, so there would be a conservation easement over that area. They are proposing a, a public access easement over a lake located in this parcel. So again, that's outside of that public land dedication requirement, but it would be to have a trail around that lake. And then they're also proposing common open space areas. That's the, the hatched green areas within parcel A, B, and C three. So I'm going to talk about that in more detail, but that's proposed as private common open space, which is a concept in our zoning code. And there's a trigger for that if there is a proposal later on through a planned unit development to go above a three-story building. And so there's a potential for an additional twenty-five point eight acres of private common open space that would be restricted to that couldn't be developed, and it would be restricted to natural landscaping and some other things. So a little bit on the proposal. They are proposing an FAR of point two four, so their proposal last year, they were at point four eight. So they brought that down to point two four, so that's a ratio of the floor area they could build to the land area minus any public land dedications and right-of-way dedications. And so their maximum allowed development would be three point one one five million square feet based on that floor area that's being proposed. The ConocoPhillips General Development Plan had an allowance of two point five million square feet, so they are proposing to up that to three, a little over three point one million square feet, but it does comply with comprehensive plan policy. So this table is within the general development plan. It outlines by parcel what the maximum square footage could be. They are proposing some ranges of floor area that would be allowed so that it could flex between parcels, but there would be an upper limit within any parcel. So a little bit more about that common open space. So within our comprehensive plan, there's a policy that's, that states that within this district, which is our rural district within the comprehensive plan, that somebody can propose up, above three stories of development. So it says you're really allowed up to three stories, but you can propose up above three stories if you meet certain policies within the comprehensive plan that includes clustering of the buildings, buffering, preserving view corridors, and those types of things. That meets, the way our code is structured, you actually can't grant that through the general development plan process. You can only grant it through the PUD process, which would have to follow this general development plan process. But they are proposing that there is some language that would anticipate some potential taller development. And so that would be limited within parcel A, which is outlined in purple, or C three. And again, that would, that could only be authorized by city council through a subsequent planned unit development. So within the zoning agreement, the PCZD zoning agreement, there's a significant amount of language that outlines how this would work. But basically, if there was any proposal for over three-story development on parcel A, they would deed restrict the green areas, the green hatched areas as private common open space. And then there's limits on development. It would have to be natural landscaping. They could put in some amenities and trails. They could put in split rail fencing and some, you know, some types of walls and things, retaining walls and those types of things, but it would be limited to that. If they were to build above three stories on parcel C, and that was approved through a PUD, then they would deed restrict the green hatched areas within parcel C three and B. So that's, so that's the proposal for the additional height. They're also requesting through that zoning agreement that within parcel A and parcel C three, so it would only be within those parcels, that if they dedicated, or deed restricted this land with an approval for more than three stories, that that would meet the open space requirements under two different municipal code sections related to PUDs at seventeen twenty-eight eighty and one ten. So when city council is reviewing a PUD, they can actually request additional open space within a development based on a set of criteria that includes density, topography, and some other things. And they're proposing that this would meet that requirement within these parcels. And then when somebody is requesting any type of waiver, including this would be a height waiver that they'd be requesting through the PUD, the city council can require additional open space as well as part of the waiver criteria so that this would meet those requirements. So that's part of their request. Just a note on that common open space, the Conoco. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. If you could go back to the last slide.
Sure.
Could you just clarify if it's, I, I understand you're trying to simplify this and make it understandable for us. Could you just clarify if it's three stories or 35 feet?
So yes, so the, what they're requesting is to allow up to 50 feet in height in three stories. So that's in the PCZD agreement. So the, our design guidelines currently under the commercial, first commercial development allows up to 35 feet and then 42 feet to any mechanical equipment. The general development plan language says that the underlying yard and bulk standards have to substantially comply with the underlying zoning. So that would be 35 feet, up to 42 feet for mechanical equipment. I think you can project up to 50 feet for architectural elements. So staff is considering the 50 feet, even though the, the code only allows 35 feet and then, you know, higher for different elements, that this would be in substantial compliance at 50 feet with the three story commercial building expectation and with the code. It doesn't say it has to match the code exactly. In a GDP, it just says it has to be within substantial compliance.
Thank you.
Okay. So a, a note on the, you know, the about 25 acres of private common open space. So ConocoPhillips had a similar concept. Their plan was really to cluster their development more centrally. They had more tall, you know, the, the percentage of taller buildings was substantially higher that they were proposing. And so with their clustering, they actually had a commitment for 222 acres of common open space. Again, that was private open space. So the benefit of allowing the clustering, the reason I think we have this in our comprehensive plan is you, for the same floor area, you get more undeveloped land. So this is the trade off. You can have bigger buffers, you could, if you do it the right way, you could preserve view corridors. You know, the way the proposal is laid out now, we've tried to work with the applicant so that the common open spaces are adjacent and contiguous with other open spaces as much as possible. Sometimes they're across the street from other open spaces, but in parcel A, they're immediately adjacent. So the, the idea is that for the same floor area that they're proposing, if you allow some clustering, you get more open space. So that's what this image is showing. Just as a comparison for ConocoPhillips, 79% of their buildings were intended to be above three stories with Redtail Ridge, if they maximize. They, they're more than three story buildings. They'd be about 35% of their buildings would be above three stories. A few other regulatory requirements within the GDP. They're requesting that the, and they've worked with staff on this, that the general development plan caps parking at the zoning minimum. So somebody can't come in and overpark the property. We are trying to promote transportation demand management, you know, more transit biking to these properties, so not overparking them helps incentivize that. They're also requesting an allowance that parking garages don't count towards floor area ratio. The way our code is written, they would count unless it would, unless it's waived through this general development plan process. This is a way of promoting less impervious surfaces and undeveloped areas as well. Because if we, if they're going to surface park everything, there's just more land that's taken up by impervious surface. If we don't, you know, disincentivize that with requiring that to count towards FAR garage, parking garage to count towards FAR, that can promote more undeveloped areas. Within parcel A, the, you know, buildings could be built up against the proposed open space and park area, potentially up to four and five stories. One of the architectural standards that the applicant is proposing to address potential negative visual impacts of really large, long buildings against the open space is that any four to five story building in parcel A adjacent to the open space couldn't exceed 125 feet in length, or if it does, 40% of that facade, the top story would have to be set back. So you'd have a little bit of terracing to limit the bulk of the building up against the open space to mitigate that. They are proposing that the exist, you may be familiar that, that there's a, a large burn along the north part of the property. Let me just go back to a quick site plan. So as you're coming up 36, you'll notice the grade increases pretty significantly as you go to the northwest. In this area, there's a large existing burn and it provides quite a bit of screening of, you know, previous storage tech development. So they are, they do have a note that says that they will maintain that burn and the screening from that burn along US 36, so they won't downgrade that down. So the road network that's being proposed, there's really a, a main network. So the, the primary thing I think that, you know, the city has been advocating for, for a long time is to extend campus drives over to 96th Street. So this proposal within the first phase, they'd be required to extend campus drive. The applicant and staff have worked with Boulder Valley School District and Monarch Administration to, on an access plan. So the proposal does include a series of roundabouts. The school district is supportive of the plan. And so there, there's also the previous tape drive would be realigned slightly and it would be renamed Rock Crest Drive. And then the main north south road, Sorrel Avenue. So this is the main spine road that is being proposed within the development with future plating. There could be other roads, you know, that could be public or private. We really haven't gotten into that detail yet. We have worked with the applicant on a complete street transportation master plan, something that's compliant with the, the vision and policies of our transportation master plan. So all of the streets have on-street bike lanes. They have off-street sidewalks and multi-use trails on all of the streets. The green areas here are proposed trails. There are two underpasses proposed under Campus Drive. There are some trail connections within Broomfield, the Broomfield, city and county of Broomfield property as well that connect to Rock Creek Trail and connect the US 36 trail over to the Rock Creek Trail. There's an existing underpass in this location as well. So you can see all of the, the internal trail network that's being proposed as well here. Here's just a little bit more detail on what the campus drive extension would look like in front of the, the school. This is a mix of four and two lane, four lane arterials and two lane collectors within that street network. And then here's just kind of an overview of that trail plan as well, but I'll just keep going through this for time's sake. So there is a traffic and mobility study included in the packet. At full buildout, the estimated additional new daily vehicle trips is over 20,000. That's almost 2000 AM additional peak and 2000 PM peak weekday trips are anticipated. So the traffic study includes an evaluation of level of service. So it studies both the immediately surrounding as well as some of the regional intersections to this development. It proposes a series of improvements that would be needed to maintain level of service above an F within all of those areas. There are within Northwest Parkway and where the, the US 36 interchange. There aren't specific long-term improvements because those need to be coordinated with the Northwest Parkway Authority and city of Broomfield and those are longer. So there, there's a lot of open-ended questions about how that would be configured in the future. So there's, there aren't specifics on those, but all other key intersections have specific improvements to maintain level of service that would, when we get to the final plat, if this is approved, you know, though there would be obligations on how those improvements would be made. So here's just distribution assumptions for the project. Significant amount of the traffic would be coming off of US 36, Northwest Parkway and 96 is what is anticipated. Here's just a more detailed summary of the, the full buildout, additional traffic and peak hour traffic. So I just have this up if there's questions. I will mention, you know, we have our public work staff at the meeting this evening. We also have a consultant that the city hired with FHU, who has helped us review the traffic study, who can help answer questions. And of course, the applicant has their traffic engineer this evening as well. This is just a summary. I won't go into any of this for time's sake, but there are, unless there are any questions. But again, there are a series of roadway improvements that would be needed at full buildout on 88th, on Dillon, on 96th, where 96 meets Northwest Parkway. That would have to be built over time to accommodate the development and maintain level of service. So we're happy to answer any questions if there are any about those, about those improvements. They have, the applicant has provided a transportation demand management plan. And within the zoning agreement, there's a commitment to that plan where when every development comes in for PUD, they would have to submit a, a, you know, basically a compliance summary of how they're complying with that TDM plan. So this could be things like eco passes, the metro district hiring a TDM coordinator, potentially private shuttle service to the flat iron flyer stations. So there's a whole series of strategies and then we would review that with every planned unit development to try to, you know, limit single occupancy trips into the site. You know, having facilities on site for biking and so forth. So that would be part of every PUD. There are drainage and utility reports. I won't go to any, any of those, but there is a master drainage plan that's been reviewed. There's a ma- master utility plan. This development would require quite a bit of infrastructure, including, you know, a, a waste, a sewer lift station is probably the most significant, as well as potential expansions to sewer facilities over time. So that would all get worked out within the final plat degree or the subdivision improvement agreement. But we are reviewing the studies now to make sure that everything is feasible and we all understand what's going to be required moving forward. There is a sustainability action plan being proposed by the applicant. So this is new from last year's proposal as well. So they are making a series of commitments on sustainability. You can see all of the topics here, but when you look in the plan, there's a series of goals, but also commitments that they would be required to meet with each PUD. So when they come back for a PUD for every development, they would have to demonstrate how they're meeting all of the commitments within the plan. There was a significant amount of discussion at the planning commission about the sustainability action plan. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. But this includes commitments such as building different facilities to lead standards. So that's a green building standard and, you know, habitat restoration within the development and, you know, other commitments within that sustainability action plan. There is a fiscal analysis. So this is really looking at the, the cost of expanded city services. So this is a, would be a significant expansion for the city, just from an area standpoint, a lot of additional roads, trails, open space. There's a city park being proposed. There would be new requirements for city services, utility plants. So the fiscal balance is really important with this development. There is a current agreement with the metro district that they would be taking care of landscaping within the right of way, but the city would really be responsible for hardscapes as well as trail maintenance on the dedicated trails and, and all of that. So this proposal also includes the city constructing a park at year three within our model. So per our policy on fiscal analysis, we did kind of a full buildout scenario as well as a constrained buildout where we reduced a lot of the assumptions. So maybe it doesn't build out as, to the same extent as far as square footage. So we're getting less revenue and so forth. So we did two different scenarios, full buildout, 80% constrained. And so you've got total revenue at the top in each scenario. You've got expenditures and you've got the net balance. So this is over 20 years and millions of dollars. So, you know, the full buildout over 20 years is about 42 million or 2 million per year. And a constrained scenario, it's estimating 23 million or about a million per year in net revenue for the city. So here's just a graph for each of those, where you can see the red is the revenue. The blue is the expenditure. This is when we are modeling that we would be building a park. So there's a big expenditure for the city at that point. And then the green is the net. So this is full buildout and then this is combined, sorry, the 80% constrained. So in both scenarios, it meets our policies for fiscal balance. It does have a fa- a positive fiscal balance with the development proposal. So the staff does go into more detail in the staff report about the analysis. So within our PCZD zoning and we look at general development plans, we really look a lot at the intent and then what our comprehensive plan policies are for the area. And so, you know, it, it is seeking to have contemporary planning principles and then really having a, you know, a mix of uses and services is intended because it's, the, a general development plan is one, one larger development with one developer. So it's trying to find flexibility and, you know, doing something a little more creative than our underlying zoning, I guess I would say is the intent of the GDP. So the comprehensive plan does call this out as a rural special district. It is compliant with policy on the way it's, the way it's crafted with density. It complies with the policies on height. The others policies for promoting walkable districts. So we've paid a lot of attention to transportation master plan policies and completing trail connections with this version. And then it requires a neutral fiscal benefit with positive economic benefit, but our, our analysis does show a positive fiscal benefit. Just a little bit more on the GDP analysis. There are, you know, this does have some contemporary planning principles such as clustering, complete streets. It certainly improves access to the Monarch Campus, which has been a big priority for the city. The open space and park dedications. You know, those, those have been vetted by the Open Space Advisory Board and the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board, and they're supportive of the, the, the mix of parks and open space and the locations. There, they are intended to be placed on areas that weren't previously developed by storage techs. So they're, you know, they're, they're, they're not, I, I guess, they're mostly undisturbed compared, of course, to where the, the building footprints were for storage tech. And this would provide some new recreation amenities, which seem to be desired by the Parks Board. Again, OSAB and PCLAB did review this at their February meetings. They're recommending approval of the plan for parks, open space and trails. So Planning Commission held their public hearing on this, went through three different meetings, May 13th, 20th and June 10th. So they did vote to recommend approval with conditions. There's five different conditions that they, that they have, that they're recommending. So one is to re, so the, the previous sustainability plan only required lead silver for office development. So they want, and so they wanted to increase, and then I, I forget the square footage threshold, but they wanted to require lead silver for all development over 10,000 square feet. So they reduced it, they wanted to reduce it and they wanted to require lead silver for all use types, not just office. So the applicant has amended the plan to require lead silver for all development, all development over 10,000 square feet. They've included the word retail staff as a condition that that be changed to commercial. I think that meets the intent of what the planning commission wanted. They, the planning commission has asked for lead silver within that sustainability action plan for all use types, not just office. The applicant has made an amendment. Um, the applicant has, uh, made an amendment to the plan that doesn't meet this re- um, recommendation exactly. For the industrial development there. Uh, they amended the plan so that it would require lead certified instead of lead silver. So if you're familiar with lead, it's a point space system. And, um, they want to commit to meeting lead silver for the office and commercial development. But for the industrial, just meeting the lead certified. Um, and they can explain more, uh, in their presentation a little bit why they want to meet that standard. I think it's generally, they feel that the industrial development, especially a core and shell, it's more difficult to meet the lead silver standard. So they want to request meeting the, the lead certified for that type of development. Um, they wanted, uh, the planning commission had asked that. Um, that there be a commitment for electric, um, HVAC systems for all use types. The first version of the plan just had it for office. Um, so they wanted to extend that to all use types. Um, the applicant has not included that. Um, they're requesting that council adopt, um, you know, not include that condition in their approval. Um, I think there's a feeling that that would be difficult, especially for some of the use types to meet that requirement. Um, there was a condition on getting a commitment from a property owner for ride away at, um, near the Monarch Campus that was needed for one of those roundabouts. They weren't able to obtain that commitment. So instead they've redesigned the roundabout slightly, so that's no longer needed. And then there were a series of public works comments, um, that were outstanding at that time, which have all been met. So the last two bullets, um, aren't, uh, aren't needed anymore. Um, staff, uh, they've partially met the fir-, they've met the first one. They've partially met the second bullet. They're asking that the third bullet not be required in summary. Um, so staff is recommending approval, um, and adoption of ordinance eighteen eleven. Um, and with one condition, and it's just that they amend the language related to that ten thousand square foot requirement to meet the lead silver rating. Um, so that they amend the language so that all commercial development, not just office and retail would be so, um, subject to that ten thousand square foot and above lead silver rating requirement. And I would be happy to answer any questions if you want at this time, or I don't know if you want to go onto the applicant's presentation.
Looks like there were a few questions during the presentation, so let's take those. Uh, Councilmember Brown, I believe you had a question on the transportation slides.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Yeah, um, Rob, can you? I think, I think your presentation may have addressed this, but it sounds like the city is going to be financially responsible for the majority of the recommended traffic improvements. Is that, is that correct? Or can you talk about which of those recommended traffic improvements per the traffic study? The city would be sort of fist financially responsible for making?
Right? Well, you know, we, so off-site intersection improvements. I would say we're anticipating there's going to be a cost share, but that usually gets developed. So, but we don't have a formal agreement with the applicant at this time. At this stage of general development plan. So when we get into the final plat within the subdivision improvement agreement, we have started to have discussions with them about what an appropriate cost share would be for the regional infrastructure. And so that would be presented with final plat when that comes. Um. Everything within the boundary of the development and immediately on the perimeter, they would be responsible for. But some of the regional could be a cost share. But I don't know what the, uh, the percentage or amount would be at that, this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. I, I have a couple of just general questions, Rob. And by the way, that was a very good presentation. I do appreciate the great staff report that was in the packet. Um, and the, and the first question has to do with waivers. So, um. If, if the applicant down the road asks for a waiver, say on height or density or something like that. And i- is it within the city's sole and absolute discretion to decide on granting those? Um, those waivers? I mean, there's nothing in the general development plan that will bind the city or require the city necessarily to grant a waiver. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it's, this wouldn't, this wouldn't bind. The language in the zoning agreement does not bind the city council to grant the waiver. Um, for example, on parcel A or C three, if there's a height request. Um, it just, uh, you know, they would have to review it against the waiver criteria as well as the comp plan policy that talks about, um, buffering and clustering and so forth. So it, it's setting up the expectation that they would meet, you know, um, you know, the comp plan policy and any other conditions of city council.
So that would. Yeah, so that would be true whether it's in the general development plan or not mentioned in the general development plan. Later on, an applicant can come in, ask for whatever they want and the city can grant whatever it wants. Is, there's no, you know, there's, there's no test of reasonableness. It's at the city's absolute discretion.
Yes, the way, yeah, I, I agree. I think the way, if somebody came on another parcel and wanted additional height. I mean, they really could ask for that additional height. Um, you know, through a waiver process, you can really get a waiver to any zoning standard that's set.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, my second question has to do with meeting, um. Existing or current city codes when a development comes in under a PUD. So I, I know we have, we have GDPs that probably go back decades. But when a PUD comes in, the applicant has to meet our codes and requirements at that time, correct? So if we decide, okay, we, we want to change our sustainability or building codes or, you know, whatever our codes are in the future and have higher standards for development. At the point the PUD comes in, they would have to then meet whatever the current standards are that have been adopted by the city. So there's really nothing in, in this, um, uh, the general development plan that, you know, locks them into anything, particularly if the codes actually increase, you know, in terms of the standards in the future. So it doesn't give them any comfort. It may show a general direction, but at the time they come in for a PUD, they'll have to meet whatever the city codes are, right?
That's correct. Yes. Um, if they, um, you know, if we adopted a more stringent building code that required lead gold or all electrification of buildings, um, they would have to meet that if that was a higher standard. So if the GDP has a higher standard than our code, they have to meet the GDP. If the code's higher, then they have to meet the code.
Okay, so you know, it, it, I mean, we can talk about this later. It just kind of seemed unusual to me to put those kind of, that kind of specificity into a general development plan when in fact, I think the city over time increases its standards. So I, I didn't understand why it was in there, but it is in there and, uh, I appreciate the clarification on that. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Dickinson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think Jeff, you may have just kind of gotten to most of my question. I, I, I was looking for some clarification, Rob, on, um, you know, what, when we typically address um, some of these sustainability issues and, and when it's, I guess, the part that, so you answered a little bit of that there. But the, I guess the second question I have then is, you know, when is it too late to get it, you know, quote unquote, right? With some of the like infrastructure pieces around sustainability? So for instance, if we, if they're doing something with GDP, are they coming in and is it possible that they are? For instance, you know, putting in a certain amount of gas line or whatever for future buildings? Um, before we get to that PUD moment? Um, you know, if we wanted, if we at some point wanted like, let's say, a higher retention of, um, rainwater capture for irrigation? Like, is it too late if we're not speaking about that now? Or are they going to do enough infrastructure between now and the PUD? Obviously, were to go forward that we'd miss that opportunity? Or is that something that's, that is still later on in the process?
I think it's later on in the process. Um, you know, if we adopt a more stringent standard, say on, you know, on, um, stormwater, for example, or, you know. They would have to meet that at that time. They would have to find a way to meet that with that infrastructure. Um, you know, I, you know, that their side, when they get to the final, they are sizing public infrastructure like water and sewer, and they'll have to work with Excel on gas and electric. Uh, but if we, um, you know, for example, if we adopt an all electrification requirement um, for HVAC and water heating and, um, you know, they would just have to comply with that at that time and work with Excel to bring that infrastructure in. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. I, you know, I mean, I think that we're all trying to, residents, council members. Um, you know, I think that the flexibility to have something different six months from now is probably scary for some residents where we're thinking, you're saying one thing, but six months from now, you're gonna, you're gonna ask for something else. On the same boat, we might be saying, well, you, you can do that today, but six months ago, six months from now, we might say, nah, you can't do that anymore. Um, so there, there's still a lot to be decided, which could be good or bad, like depending on how that goes for, or how people imagine that going for anyone. We're not, we're, there are some things that can't be set now and some things that can be set. And so what I heard you say is if in this GDP process, we make some rules that are more stringent than our building code is otherwise, they will have to do that when they come back for a PUD. Even though a do- a different building in a different GDP wouldn't have to do that. So we do have some opportunities in, at this stage to do it, but we could do it later as well. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be too late.
Right, yeah. And the applicant has proposed the sustainability action plan, um, or the sustainability commitment plan. Um, you know, as, as a way to, I think, address a lot of the comments they heard last year with the last proposal. Um, you know, it's not something that's required by the city. Um, and you know, if they, you know, if they were to be successful in this and start developing a couple of properties in the next few years and we change our code, say, three or four years from now, there could be development, you know, properties within the development that have to meet a higher standard than the initial property. So yeah, as, as the city evolved, that, every developments like that in the city. Um, you know, things built a couple of decades ago don't have to meet the same energy efficiency standards as buildings now.
Okay, I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Director Saccaro, could you please elaborate on your answer a little bit or, or maybe City Attorney Kelly? So like, for example, um, we passed, uh, inclusionary zoning, um, for housing. So that if housing is built, um, uh, on, on a site that a certain amount of it has to be dedicated for affordable housing. And, and at the, at that time, we were sort of told that, you know, things that have already submitted for a PUD then can't be required to meet that standard, even though we, the council hasn't taken up the PUD yet. It hasn't been an approved PUD yet. We were told those projects wouldn't be held to that standard. So can you just talk a little bit more about the timeline and what the trigger points are for code changes versus inclusion? Cause that's not totally clear to me. Rob, do you want me to take this question?
Um, yeah, I'll start and just, you know, expand or correct me. But, you know, the, building codes are typically effective on the, um, when you apply for the building permit. So, um, you know, if somebody applies for a building permit and then we change the code subsequent to an application coming in, you know, they get to stay under the old code. But, um, if we adopt a new building code, um, to, to my knowledge, it doesn't matter what the GDP or PUD says. They're subject to that new building code.
Thank you. City Attorney Kelly, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, I think Rob described that very well. I mean, in essence, the differences between building codes and just land use regulations. So the building codes, um, that are applicable are at the time of building permit. The affordable housing provisions were just part of your general land use code. And so that's applicable at the time, um, of the application is defined in the, you know, for the land use development process.
So just a follow-on question to that, Director Saccaro. It's something like net zero building. Would that be considered a building code or a land use code?
Uh, I believe that would be part of our building code, uh, is likely how we would adopt it.
Thank you. And we have talked about it. I've heard, you know, Councilmember Lipton, when we were doing work planning, talk about it in other terms than that in the past. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, when we brought up building code changes, there've been proposals to do it with different mechanisms. So I guess just depending what mechanism we use would have a different consequence.
Yeah, and I think even if we put provisions within, let's say, a set of commercial or industrial design standards. Um, you know, that required certain provisions, they would be subject to those provisions. Um, you know, if it, if it had, if it was above and beyond what was committed to within the general development plan. Um. I, I mean, there's probably exceptions to that. Let me make some examples, maybe the architectural standard. So let's say within this general development plan, they're committing to this a hundred and twenty-five foot maximum standard with the, the, the bump back on the top story. Um, if we adopted a, uh, commercial development standard that was different than that, I think they'd be subject to the GDP standard on that architectural standard. But if there wasn't a standard in place, um, they'd be subject to the commercial design standard that we adopt.
Thank you for that clarification. Very helpful. I really appreciate that. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Saccaro, I wonder if you could, the, the open space dedication portion of this application, I actually find quite confusing because there's, there's conservation easements in Brimfield. There's previous land that was not subject to the twelve percent. There's the private portions, there's the public portions. Can you clarify what parts are part of the twelve percent calculation? Like which, do the private lands that would get triggered by the height restriction, do those count towards the twelve percent that you're calculating?
Yeah, um, no, so there, um, hopefully you can see my screen again. So their public land dedication proposal is, um, does not include the common open space green crosshatch. It includes the dark green, open space, the light green park, and then this red public safety parcel. And so that is their public land dedication. That would be, um, dedicated to the city. We would own that land, um, have final plat, and that exceeds their twelve percent requirement under our code.
Okay, and that's, so that doesn't include the, the, either the orange crosshatch down at the bottom or the green? Now, what's the percentage of, you know, of open space if the green crosshatch is included?
If the green crosshatch is included, that's in a, I think they have, um, a table here. So I think they have a table on the general development plan that includes that. Let me just, if you give me just a second, let me reference that. Okay, let me share my screen quickly here. Okay, so this is on the second page of the general development plan. And this is where they summarize, um, the different acreages. So can you see this? Have I zoomed in enough? Okay, so they're proposing fifty nine point three acres. Um, so that's fifteen percent of the total acreage is where they're at with that fifty nine acres. Um, if they, it, um, so they've got a couple of other numbers here. They've got total public land dedication and then the other. Um, so that, that in total sixty seven acres. And I think that other includes the common open space, I believe, is how you get there. Um, no, I'm sorry, this top one. Let me just slow down. I do not know what the other is yet, but it's all, it's all summarized here. Um, so you've got the public land. Oh, I think you've got the encumbered. I, so I know what it is. Let me, let me start from scratch here. So the total public land is the, you know, all of those green and red areas. The other are the encumbered areas. So that's where there's easement. So under our ordinance, it says if you're dedicating public land, but there's a big electrical transmission line easement, you don't get to count that. So they, they, so that's this encumbered column. So there's an additional seven point seven acres of encumbered property. So if you include that all together, they're at sixty seven acres or seventeen percent. If you include the common open space, the private open space, that takes you up to ninety two point eight acres. Now, that common open space isn't guaranteed. It only gets triggered in two different groupings if they propose more than three stories. If they, if the whole development's three stories or below, there would be no common open space restriction, just to be clear. But this is where they have that summary on the GDP.
Okay, so just, thank, thank you, Director. I appreciate it. So the, it, so since we don't generally count the easements, the other essentially, you know, just doing the math here, it looks like it's about, e- it, in the best case scenario, with height, with height things waived and whatnot, which, you know, councils may not want to do in the future, um, it's maybe twenty-one percent. Is that, that's the, that's kind of subtracting the maybe two or three percent um, of this other section that we don't usually count, something like that.
Yes, and I think that's the total acreage too. So the other thing to keep in mind is there's an eighty acre portion of this that's exempt from the public land dedication requirement. So under our ordinance, they, just under our plating ordinance, you know, they're well above it. But again, there's lots of language in our code where council could require more open space for different reasons.
Can you talk about that exemption? Um, what, what is, what is the eighty acres that are exempt and why are they exempt?
So when the city, um, when the city annexed in an eighty acre section, so the original storage tech property wasn't the entire three hundred and, um, eighty-nine acres. So it was basically the eighty acre, there's an eighty acre section, and I think it was the section basically south of the Monarch Campus. That was one of the last areas to be annexed in. I don't know the reason why they exempted it. Um, I couldn't find that in the record, but it is exempt from the public land dedication through the annexation agreement.
Okay, so, so that part doesn't count. Essentially, that part doesn't count in the denominator.
Yeah, in the, in the minimum requirement per our subdivision ordinance, it doesn't count.
So the twelve percent is calculated off of the property minus that part that, that you just said that isn't sub to the, to that.
Right, yeah. When we say the minimum, so I think we calculated the minimum per our subdivision ordinance, that does not include the eighty. Um, that does not include that eighty acres.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Directors Zakara. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Um, I have a couple of questions to start off, some just questions around transportation, but they won't be exhaustive with my questions for the transportation folks, and I recognize the time. But I think it'd be useful to get a couple of questions on the table. Um, if, if I could ask, um, when, when you're looking through the, the report from the applicant, the transportation study noticed, notices that there are, um, what they're calling basically capacity limitations in different phases. So like in twenty twenty-five, um, they noticed that there are needs for improvements at intersections. And then again, in twenty thirty and so on and so forth throughout, and they list a, a number of improvements. Um, when, when then the analysis is done on the next phase, so that's on the base case, where, with no development, does it assume those improvements are in place?
So within the traffic report, there are tables that show with no improvements, and then there's tables that show with the improvements. So they, they analyze both scenarios. What would it be like without improvements and with? So it depends on where you're looking in the report.
Um, so maybe when we meet again and discuss this, we can go through that in more detail, explaining that and showing, um, like in the scenarios that include the new development, showing what improvements are assumed to be done. And then sort of a crosswalk that explains, I, I don't believe almost any of those improvements are listed in our transportation master plan, and a number of them are listed in twenty twenty-five. So we've had another expert in our transportation master plan tell us these things, they're not identified as improvements. So we didn't think we needed them. So I want to understand why, what the disconnect between those two things is. And if we can have some more discussion around that, that'd be helpful at the next meeting. Um, and then just additionally, um, um, if we could get what Councilmember Brown was talking about, that, um, annexation agreement and any meeting minutes. I recognize you said there's no clarity around it, but it would be helpful to read the meeting minutes associated with that annexation to understand that eighty acres better. Um, that would be useful for the next discussion. Um, and I have one other thing I was hoping for, for the, oh, um, we have those attachments in the packet that show the, the views, uh, with the five-story views from the different streets. If we could have similar view sheds with three-story buildings or the thirty-five foot buildings, that would be helpful for comparison sake for the next meeting. Any other, um, information folks know they would like to discuss or need for the next meeting that they can identify now if you haven't already sent it in? Councilmember Dickinson?
Um, it's, I don't have a specific request. I can, I guess I can email to you, Rob, but I just, I'd like to have a, I'll have some questions about comparison between, um, CTC and this, and like Broomfield and this, our neighboring, like, what's right next to us, like densities and things like that. I know that I can look at some of it, but I think it's good for the public record as well, just to be able to, you know, really get apples to apples with those two, um, pieces, but that what, we've heard a lot of the, um, don't Broomfield, Louisa? Like, what does Broomfield look like? What is their normal development plan? And what, what do we do in the CTC and what is the plan behind that? So just a lot of kind of little questions about what, you know, the process of this, of the CTC development. So if, I, I know you're doing a ton of work, but just kind of thinking about, you know, the things that we're dealing with here, prairie dogs, height, um, FAR, like the decisions that a council went through, um, years and years ago for that space. Just kind of trying to, uh, learn from, from that experience as well and all. Um, yeah, trying to do that research myself.
Well, I, I have, I mean, if we have time, I could briefly go over the Broomfield information if you want, or if, if we're right at ten o'clock, if you want to wait. I have the Broomfield information. I could talk a little bit about CTC.
I think we should get council members, I mean, Councilmember Fahy has her hand up with maybe some other requests she has. Um, I have a couple additional things that I'm looking for, so I don't know the opening a new discussion and cutting it short and then not letting people follow up is the right thing to do since it's nine fifty-eight. So we're definitely going to have more deliberation and discussion on this. We're going to hear from the public on this. We'll hear from the applicant on their presentation. So there's a lot left to do, so I don't think we should try to squeeze it in. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm wondering about your fiscal analysis. Um, in the, in your, your graph, you were showing over the years, um, going to full build out. What, my question is, what if it does not go to full build out? Uh, what would the fiscal impact be for the city to be maintaining it with, for example, only one or two of the sites actually being completed?
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. And then I'm, I just noticed on my note, um, you know, there's four-lane roads being proposed, and over the last several years, we've seen a lot of push to make sure that we don't have roads that are excessively large. Um, I can think of Centennial Valley. Um, we have Centennial that was a four-lane road built for an office park that we made into a one-lane each way or a two-lane road. Um, Cherry Street was reduced in size, um, to try to address speeding and safety for bicycles and pets. So just trying to understand the volumes on those streets and then compare it to the volumes on the streets that are being proposed as four lanes and understand if they really need to be four lanes, and then maybe compare it to something like, you know, Highway forty-two, which we all recognize might need additional capacity, just to try to understand if these four-lane roads are, um, a good idea. Thanks. Any other things folks are looking for for next time? All right, and I'll just turn to City Attorney Kelly for a little bit of help on how we should continue the hearing and, um, look to Rob, Directors Zakara, to help us on a date that, you know, people like the traffic engineers and the applicant and, um, the folks that we need to have available can come back.
Yes, Mayor, in order to preserve the notice that's already been given of this public hearing, you, um, should have a motion to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain.
All right, thank you for that. And so Director Zakara, have you talked with the, um, applicant and their staff and then your technical experts to find a time that we could continue the meeting too?
Well, I, we've been anticipating we would continue to August third, if that was the council's pleasure to go to that meeting date. I don't know that I've checked with everybody on their availability, so maybe if, um, if, if anybody wants to speak up, I guess, but I, I can't say for sure that everybody that we need there is available, but we would expect, um, they would from the applicant's side, and I'd have to check with our traffic engineer. I haven't checked with him.
All right, so we, it sounds like should continue to August third. Um, it looks like maybe we have some feedback from one of the people we might need to hear from, if they'll be available on August third. I see Jay Hardy has turned his camera.
Yeah, I would just speak for the applicant that we're prepared to extend, uh, through to the third.
Okay, thank you for that. That's helpful. Um, and so we will continue to August third. I move that we continue ordinance number eighteen eleven, series twenty twenty-one to August third. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Any discussion of the motion to continue?
Mayor, this is Kathleen Kelly. Just to clarify, that's the regular meeting on August third that begins at six o'clock PM?
Yes, that is, that was the intention of my motion. Thank you. And, um, members of the public, um, we had about fifty-five people at most, um, during the meeting tonight. And so I really do appreciate everyone's focused attention and coming out and the comments that we have received by mail and all the applicants work on this. Uh, I really appreciate all that effort, and we'll continue this on the third to continue to get input and to continue the council deliberation and hear those other perspectives that we haven't been able to make it to tonight. So if there are no other questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. That takes us to council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. Are there any council committee reports that can't wait until the next scheduled meeting? I just have one quick update. I met with, um, Commissioner Kraft Tharp for coffee, and we talked about any number of things relating to airport noise. Um, but one commitment that she did make, that she wanted me to convey to the group, is that in their business planning, um, that Director Anslow and the airport staff would look at a high level on the impact of any types of proposals that they would have to noise. So not a detailed noise study, but understanding that if it was a land use change, like adding a seven eleven, they would rank whether they thought it would have an impact to noise, or if it's a runway change or a hangar change. So there was a commitment there that she asked me to share with the group. Um, so I wanted to let you all know that as soon, at the soonest opportunity. Any other council committee reports or comments that can't wait until the next meeting? All right, seeing none. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. See you next time.